Okay, it's four o'clock and so at this time we'll call to order the March 7th, 2016, meeting of the Salina City Commission. And we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
All right, thank you. I would ask that at this time, all who are able to stand and join in the pledge of allegiance and in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, we'll get started with the words and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of March 2016 as Women's History Month in the city of Salina. Carla Moore, Human Relations Commissioner, will read the proclamation.
Great, thank you. Hi Carla.
Women's History Month proclamation. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways; and whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home; and whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation; and whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation; and whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all; and whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history; and whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement; and whereas, in honor of Women's History Month in Salina, the Salina Community Relations Department and Human Relations Commission will host a special event. The event will highlight women in Salina that have made a difference. Women will tell their stories and express the challenges that they face as they pave the way for future leaders of our community. So now therefore I, John Blanchard, Mayor of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of March, 2016, as Women's History Month, and I urge all citizens to participate in this celebration and further resolve to enact the principles of equality and fairness, justice, and freedom in our daily lives. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, this seventh day of March, 2016. John R. Blanchard, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Can you tell us a little bit more about the special event?
There will be a Women's History Month special celebration at the Salina Art Center on March 31st at 5:30, March 31st at 5:30 at the Salina Art Center, to celebrate accomplishments of women in Salina. Jenny Bevan from Kansas Wesleyan University, the Honorable Judge Mary Thrower, Commissioner Lucy Larson, and the Reverend Dee Williamson will be speakers for the event.
Great. Is that free of charge?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, is there anything else that's going on, other than we should just thank American women everywhere, because without them, many of us wouldn't be here.
Yes.
All of us.
None of you would.
So true.
So, anyway, thank you for that. Thank you for serving on the commission, and thank you to the Human Relations Commissioners and Commission and Community Relations Department for helping with this as well. So I have your signed proclamation.
Thank you Carla.
Keep thinking of that song by the Guess Who. Wasn't it the Guess Who, "American Woman"? "American Woman." Good song. Okay, we'll move on now to Citizens Forum, and this is an opportunity for anyone to come and speak on any item that is not on today's agenda. And we would just ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less and give your name and address when, before speaking. And so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Kevin Rose, Fire Chief. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's my pleasure to be here today. On February 13th, at the Annual Kansas Emergency Medical Technicians Conference, Annual Conference, excuse me, the Salina Fire Department is recognized as the Ambulance Service of the Year. This is awarded annually. The award's given in recognition to the ambulance service that has shown to deliver the best emergency care in their community. The Salina Fire Department continues to strive to provide the highest level of evidence-based pre-hospital medical care. Dr. Sean Harrington, M.D., serves as our Department Medical Director, works closely with our department, and proves all protocols and procedures performed by the nearly 90 dedicated EMTs and paramedics in our community. We're extremely honored by this recognition, wish to thank the Kansas Emergency Medical Technicians Association for recognizing our efforts. And real quickly, I'll read the nomination letter, which was by another fire department, which is kind of unusual. It's from Concordia Fire Department Chief Boss. Said, "I would like to nominate the Salina Fire Department for Service of the Year. Salina Fire is a department that all departments in the state should try to strive to model. In 2015, Salina Fire Department ran nearly 9,700 calls, with 6,700 of those being EMS-related. They also always make time to help with our paramedic students. The students that come out of the Salina Fire Program are some of the best in the state. Salina Fire is a very active region for EMS council, as well as the State Board of EMS. Salina Fire is always there to help in any service that any attendant needs. As one of their recent students said, the Salina Fire Department is very proactive and excellent in teaching all new treatment methods such as the PIT crew CPR. I feel over the years Salina Fires earn their excellence to be named Department of the Year. Just like to recognize the department."
Great.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And congratulations to Dr. Harrington and the 90-plus EMTs and EMS staff, and the Salina Fire Department as a whole. I mean, we're very well-served. We know that through being accredited and all the other things that the department's gone through. We just, we thank Chief Boss at Concordia for nominating, but I think that being recognized in that manner by your peers is a pretty special thing. So, it's great to have that, and we certainly appreciate all the work that you do in the community.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, just add a little to that about, I'd say probably nine and a half years ago or so, that we had a goal, an operational goal, that we wanted our Salina Fire Department and EMS to be the best in the state. And sometimes you want to be the best, you should always strive to be the best, but it's sometimes hard to figure out what your benchmarks are and all that. I think clearly there's one right there that gives us a very, very good indication of where we are with our EMS function. And as you mentioned, a lot of folks get a lot of credit over there, they've done a heck of a job, and they serve the community very well.
Great. And Chief, welcome aboard. I think this is your first time here.
It is, it is. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Crawford, I think we had the pleasure of sharing a meal at the League of Municipalities a while back, so we've been asking.
Yeah, we did. I thought you were the same one when Jason was here. We had, we had a real good dinner that night, didn't we?
It was very good, yes. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Welcome, Salina.
Great, thank you very much. Great work. Okay, someone top that, Citizens Forum. Okay, seeing no other citizens' comments at this time, we'll move into the consent agenda.
Real quick, Mayor, before we do that, it might be a good time to add item 8.3, if you'd like to go ahead and get that out there, that way everyone is aware of it.
Okay. Item 8.3 was delivered while we were in our study session, I believe. And so, I would entertain a motion to add item 8.3 to consider ordinance number 16-10827 to today's agenda.
Some of.
Can I have a second? Okay. Have a motion and a second to add item 8.3, considering ordinance number 16-10827 to today's agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carries 4-0, so that will be at the end of the agenda today. So now, we'll, thank you. We'll move to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 22nd, 2016. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of February 29th, 2016. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of TV truck equipment for wastewater collection from Mayor Equipment and Supply LLC, in the amount of $63,830. And item 6.4, approve the purchase of four police package vehicles from Long MacArthur Ford, in the amount of $101,524, and the purchase installation of ancillary equipment from KCOM Inc., in the amount of $41,674.70.
Okay, thank you. Is there any item that any Commissioner would like to have removed or amended on the consent agenda?
I just have a comment about one, but not my decision on the issue itself.
Okay.
Again, just regarding the four police vehicles to be purchased, I'll probably sound like a broken record, but came in off the freeway last night down at Schilling Road and got behind a black van, and it was going kind of slow, and I couldn't figure out why this guy wasn't moving. Turned out it was one of our police vehicles. The writing on the back of the vehicles is not reflective, on the Ford Explorers. And fortunately, I was not in that much of a hurry and didn't start honking at him, would be very embarrassing, but. But, and another one, it was sitting on this, I'm sure doing surveillance work, but I think if I was looking for a police vehicle, I'd have trouble spotting these.
None of the decals are reflective in nature. Part of it is because it costs considerably more to have reflective decal. That's part of the reason. We have tons and tons of light on there, lights on there when they're on. Obviously, you couldn't see when you're behind it. There's quite a bit of verbiage on the back of it. Were you farther from it, or?
No, I pulled up, well, I ended up pulling right behind him at a stop sign, at stoplight. But from a distance at which I would have easily been able to tell one of the, I guess the Crown Vex or whatever the older ones are, they would have said Salina Police on the back. I really could not tell him. I've learned to look for them now, you know, this is a little thin light across the top. But they don't stand out, if they're on the side of the, you know, there's pros and cons to that. But there are times when citizens actually need to find a police vehicle, and at night, these vehicles are very stealth, which again, there are times when you want it to be stealth.
I'm sure you're 100% right. I don't know if I can win here. What I'll say is, the light bars are low visibility, that's just the nature of the industry. They're making them lower and lower visibility. Part of it's better gas mileage, part of it's less visibility, as far as, and when they come on, they're not less visible, they're phenomenal when they're on. But they are very low visibility, mainly for drag and appearance, and possibly to be stealthy, I don't know about that. But everything's getting smaller and brighter, as far as the lights. The decals, sure, we can look into making those reflective, but again, that's considerably more if you want the whole wrap reflective. That's considerably more money to do that for each car, and we have roughly 18 cars, so you'd be, you'd be talking some money, but I mean, it's something we can look into. I had not heard that complaint previously.
Before, right, yeah, I know. Do I sound like a broken record? Fortunately, my lifestyle is such that usually I would be looking for a police car because I wanted to find him, rather than looking for one because I didn't want him to find me. But, and I understand the pros and cons of being visible and less visible, but I think they're, you know, if they could be somewhere in the middle. Because I think there are times when I would really want to find a police vehicle, and these, and again, they fit in great, which is great for certain types of police work. But, you know, if I was really looking for a police vehicle, I find he's hard to find.
Certainly, I take, but are you like thinking some huge white says police on it? I don't mean, I don't mean obnoxiously, just something.
Even if the word, the letter Salina Police, if they were just outlined in something reflective.
Okay.
You know, sort of if, you know, from 100, 150 feet back, have my headlights on, I can tell, oh, there's a guy.
And are you primarily concerned about the back or the sides or all of it?
Uh, the back.
Okay. We'll look into it, yeah. Fair enough.
Well, you said you couldn't win, that looked like a win. No, actually, I will make a, since you're here, I'll make, I'll make a comment that these vehicles came in nearly $11,000 under budget, and Long MacArthur, which was the local dealer, was the low bid and got the, got the contract, so that's a.
You may have $11,000 for the back now.
Right, right. So I think there's plenty of wins there, so.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, so, all in favor of approving, or, did I have?
I move approve the consent agenda.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries 4-0. We will move to administration business.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 16-10820, requesting the vacation of a 10-foot wide north-south public utility easement that abuts lots 89, 91, 93, 95, 97, and 99 on 5th Street, and lots 90, 92, 94, 96, 98, and 100 on 4th Street, all in the original town of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and a 10-foot wide north-south public alley that is located between 5th Street and 4th Street, between Ash and East Iron Avenue in the original town of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, less the south 475 feet thereof, to allow construction of the downtown Fieldhouse project in that location.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number 16-10820 was passed on first reading on February 22nd, 2016, and since that time, we have received no comment. Is there any public comment present today? Okay, and seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action on this item.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption on second reading, ordinance number 16-10820.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to adopt on second reading, ordinance number 16-10820. Are there any further comments or discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 16-10822, requesting approval of Article 4, Division 14 of Salina zoning ordinance by amending the C4 district regulations to add bowling alleys to the list of permitted uses in Section 42-302 of the C4 district regulations.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number 16-10822 was passed on first reading, also on February 22nd, 2016, and since that time, no comments have been received. And we will take public comment on this item, if there is any. And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move approve on second reading, ordinance number 16-10822. Second.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 16-10822. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call on this as well.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0.
Item 7.3, second reading, ordinance number 16-10823, requesting the amendment of Section 42-410D and Article 7, Plan Development District of the Salina zoning ordinance, to clarify the status of conditional uses in planned commercial districts.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number 16-10823 was passed on first reading, February 22nd, 2016. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment at this time? And seeing none, we will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption on second reading of ordinance number 16-10823.
Second.
Motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance number 16-10823 on second reading. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call again.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0.
Item 7.4, second reading, ordinance number 15-10810, requesting approval of zoning change from R2 District to PDD, Plan Development District, and the approval of a preliminary site development plan for proposed entryway improvements for the Bicentennial Center, including an electric message center sign to be located at the southwest corner of South Ohio and the Midway.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number 15-10810 was passed on first reading, November 2nd, 2015, and since that time, there have been a few changes made on that, so we'll get sort of an update on that from Mr. Andrew.
Just wanted to clarify for you, the reason for the delay or period between the first and second reading is we wanted to get a clean development plan that didn't show anything else on it but the sign. So the only thing that is subject to the Plan Development District on that lot is the location, the size, the height, the dimensions of the sign. And so, there were, some of the other drawings we had showed sidewalks and landscaping and different things like that. That is not part of the Plan Development District, so now we have a clean drawing. And so, the sole purpose of doing the Plan Development District was the sign, and we have a drawing that depicts all those things. And then the ordinance was modified to incorporate the requirement to have 11-inch shield around the outside to block the light spill. And so, those, that is the primary change since your first reading.
Okay. And just a quick question, if anybody else has a question too, they can ask, but this was pretty much directed just towards the zone, from the zone change from the R2 to the public.
Correct.
Okay.
To the public use district. The sign that was proposed did not fit neatly within the public use sign limitations, so the Plan Development District was to create a customized district specifically for the entryway sign, but not for anything else.
Okay, super. Any further questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, we'll take public comment at this time. Okay, and seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action on this item.
Mr. Mayor. Be my guest.
Madam, how about that? Yes, Mayor, may I move on second reading, ordinance number 15-10810, requesting approval of zoning change from R2 District to a PDD, and approval of a preliminary site development plan for proposed entryway improvements for the Bicentennial Center, including an electronic message center sign to be located at the southwest corner of South Ohio and the Midway.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 15-10810. Any further discussion at this time? Just have one quick question. The development, the development, talking about a PDD, the actual development plans for the, for the sign itself included a series of landscaping. Will that be taken up in a completely separate item? Or what does that, what does the plan for the sign and then the landscaping that is surrounding it, what, what will that look like?
Yeah, the PDD address is specifically the footprint for the sign, but we have your guidance from the last meeting where you were talking about, as Dean mentioned, the spill effect of the light and so forth, that's, and the sizing that's included there. The landscaping, I'd have to defer to Dean, but I believe there's a, there's a two-phase approach to this. There's a current phase, then there's later on a presumption that you may have a river improvement there, there's somewhat of an expanded phase, but I believe there's significant landscaping included in the first phase, to my knowledge. I'd have to look at either Dean or Mike, but I'm quite sure I recall that from the last time that it came in front of you.
The public use district does require landscaping for projects, and we would simply apply our landscape and zero scape planting list to what they have proposed there, but that would be done at a later phase as part of the development that, but it wouldn't be directly tied to the Plan Development District because it hasn't been fleshed out yet.
Okay, great. And then, what is the, just for information purposes, when do, when will construction maybe get started on, on putting that sign in?
They are starting, are really starting to work on the pre-project aspects right now, but I believe the, there's three pieces to the full Bicentennial Center project left, and they were talking about that timeframe being probably towards the end of the Season of Liberty, which is what, into June, I believe. But the sign, I'd have to look, it might be able to be accelerated beyond, or accelerated from that point, but I need to confirm whether or not that's what they're looking at, because at the last that we checked, all three pieces were at the same time. But that won't be as disruptive as other aspects of the project that are in the building. So, there we go.
Due to the timeframe of the lead time on the sign, it had a rough start time for the work at the end of June, but not completed until beginning of September.
Okay, so starts pretty close to the same time as the other projects.
Right, in fact, the synchronization of that timing was a consideration, since they're still part of the construction manager at risk and owner's rep process, so we're trying to make sure that we're synchronizing those for the contract purposes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just would anticipate some curiosity as to when people might start seeing something happening there. Okay, great. Have a motion and a second for the approval on second reading, and so we'll get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0.
Item 7.5, Resolution Number 16-7331, authorizing the mayor to execute an engineering design services agreement with H.W. Lochner Incorporated for the Country Club Road improvements.
Great, thank you. Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a project needing of major maintenance, and Marymount Road from Iron Avenue here to Country Club, and then Country Club from Marymount all the way to Eastboro. It's a old section of, it's an old concrete road underneath the asphalt that's there. It's been there a long time. The asphalt overlay is needing repaired, and so we've gone around and around as staff on what's the best way to repair this. It's really expensive, of course, to haul it out and put in a new road, as we know, and so we've, the last few years with budgets and trying to figure out what we could do to minimize or lower the cost some, so we've, we came up with kind of an overlay approach where we would end up repairing what we can, improving what we can, fixing the curbs, putting a sidewalk in where there isn't one. There's some areas where there is sidewalk, but not, not for the whole distance. And then, you know, the base is decent with concrete, it's usually a pretty good base. If we can figure out a way to get a good layer of asphalt in there and bridge it and smooth it up with any kind of patching needed, that would be the hope. So that's, that is what we are looking to, Lochner here, to help us with. Let's see, we've kind of estimated the first 500 feet, which is right in here. That section is needing curbs on both sides of the road and a sidewalk. There's nothing exists there, and so we're hopeful to connect the sidewalk from the south along this Marymount side. We've talked with Mr. Mars there, and it's a fairly steep hill, but the road's also excessively wide, so we're hoping maybe with balancing the width and the grades and getting a sidewalk in there could work, which would get pedestrians to the, to the Marymount area and the Country Club there. And then there is a sidewalk on the south side of Country Club Road for maybe half the way. It stops at Overhill, so Overhill here would need a new sidewalk, and then from the park up here to Marymount, basically Marymount College, or the old Marymount College. So those are the areas we'd look to put in a sidewalk where there isn't one currently, and then fix a lot of the curbs that are in there. So that's what our scope is about, looking to construct this in 2017. We did request proposals in 2014, it's been a while. This one has been shifted over the years from, as some of our projects have increased, Ohio and Iron, namely the two, we've had to push this one a little farther and a little farther, and yes, it's definitely getting worse and worse, so we're hoping to get to it next year for sure. And we, we went through a proposal process to get a consultant, and Lochner did a good job for us on Centennial Road, and it was kind of a package deal. They weren't huge projects, but they got this one as well. $84,600 approximately for this, for the design. It's a little higher than maybe normal. It's a little higher than maybe normal. It's just, there's a, that retaining wall could be kind of a structural item. We're hoping it's not that tall, but the possibility exists it could be a little taller than some of our normal just stacked block walls or just typical sidewalk walls. It may have to be a structural wall, or more of a structural wall.
Dan, where will the wall, where will the wall go? I don't.
Right there on the, it'd be the, uh, west side.
Against the Marymount properties?
Yep. Yep, there's a bunch of bushes there right now. If you drive there, you'll see the bushes, and it's, it's a really steep slope, basically.
Oh, I know it is, yeah. I travel that nearly every day, but what I can't figure out is, uh, I mean, eighty-four thousand for design seems, I mean, that road's been there forever. I can't understand why it costs so much to design that road. It's already there.
Dan, what's, uh, what's your, what's your budget for the, for the project?
One point, one point one million dollar construction project, so that's eight, about eight percent.
Yeah.
Um, so that, we felt like that was, I mean, just looking at the, like I said, the retaining wall, these intersections, they all are somewhat misaligned. I mean, they work, but they're, when you have, I mean, the, the, they're wide and they're overly sized for trying to look back and see a car. So, we're gonna look at the intersection geometry for a couple of intersections, as well as, um, the geometry around this corner, um, the design, the design speed, and then, it's, it's kind of an overly wide corner, so we, we figure we'll do some modifications and some delineation of the actual road, so it's not just one giant expansive pavement, especially for pedestrians to cross, so you don't have to cross a, a huge expansive pavement. And then, we'll delineate, delineate the, um, the driveways there, separate the Country Club and the Marymount properties, as well as the parking that's there. So, we see just a little more design in that, in that regard. So, yeah, it's, it's, uh, there's just more to it than trying to match existing grades. It's just, it's a rehab project, so those are typically, eight percent is, I don't feel it's too bad for that.
Would this, this would be a regular width sidewalk, not a bike lane type sidewalk?
Well, we, we were gonna look at, uh, this would have bike lanes on it. It is a biker route, so we'll have to make it wide enough for bike lanes on the road. The sidewalk is a question. We've, we've wrestled with that quite a bit. We thought we would bring that back to you with a concept study session in the next month or so, kind of look at these, get these, we've already surveyed it, so we've, we've started, um, city staff's already surveyed it, so they'll be able to start looking at some of those options fairly quickly and get some estimates back to us, and some options to see, okay, can we afford that? Do we want that? Where would it go if we put it, a wider sidewalk there? Would it go on the south side that would, you know, cut into people's yards? And there is already a sidewalk there, so it'd be a lot of extra work to remove it and put in a new one, but, you know, it is a, it's once, kind of a once-in-a-lifetime project really, or once-in-a-fifty-year project, so if that's what we want to do, we can. Um, we could try to put on the north side. There's room there, but it is near the golf course, and it's more challenging terrain. I don't know, how, how people like walking next to a golf course with no net, you know? It's just, I'm not that good of a golfer, so, you know.
I don't think so.
Be careful about that, but I don't know, maybe those odds are low. I don't know. But, it's just, uh, we thought that with the bike lanes and a sidewalk, we have a five-foot sidewalk on Marymount, and it, it's used quite a bit. It seems to work out there, but.
Now, there are times when cars park on the, I guess that'd be the north side.
North side, right, mhm.
So, the curbs now will eliminate that possibility.
No, you can drive over them, and, and we weren't sure, weren't positive we were gonna add a curb the whole way. That's a, that's an item that, you know, it doesn't have one now. It's got a good edge on it. We could add curbs, but it, you don't necessarily have to. We were gonna look at, what would it be if we didn't add curbs? Because it's, it's, uh, you know, twenty, thirty-one hundred feet of curb, and it's, it's a cost, so we could make it look nice without a curb or with a curb, but we haven't quite made that call yet. But either way, we'd, they'd, they'd probably want to keep some of that parking just for the overflow events that they have.
I, I would presume, though, if we put curbs, we really wouldn't want to have people get in habit driving over the curbs.
You wouldn't want to.
So, that's maybe a factor in the use of it when we have those conversations as well.
They might, but they shouldn't, yeah.
Not very good for the car.
No.
No.
No, or for the curb.
We can put rollover curbs. I mean, that is an option, so you can drive over them.
Right, just mountable.
Is there a pump station there at the north end of that park? Is that gonna get involved in?
Yeah, it is. That's a design consideration as well. It's, I think it's a fairly new pump station. Is that a new one, Martha? One that's been replaced? No?
I was thinking.
It's been worked on.
Worked on. Not new, but it's been worked on. So, it's, uh, yeah, we're gonna have to park, clean up the, some of that area in there, and I think a sidewalk and some new curb in that are really dressing it up quite a bit.
How long a project is this?
Thirty-one hundred feet approximately.
No, I mean, I mean.
Oh.
How long, construction.
Boy, like a true engineer.
Yes.
How long will it take?
How long will this take? Uh, we think this would be a shorter construction season than Centennial. Centennial's a haul-out and put in a new road. This one, we'd think it's a, it's a major maintenance, but it's an overlay, so those just take less time. We're thinking three to four months.
Is it a one-lane-at-a-time phasing or, because my only concern would be, and I'm sure you work it out, but two things. One is the, the Country Club access in and out of that, well, the whole thing.
Mhm.
And the other one is, is that it looks like they're doing the Eastborough intersection as well, so people that are clear down, well.
Past that.
The east of that are going, where, where would they?
Where would they come in?
Where would the detours be?
It's a long detour. It'd probably be Simpson Road on, in that case, so it's, that's a long detour. We weren't sure what we were gonna do with the intersection, so that may be a phasing challenge. We have to keep it open, you know, some section at a time. That's a good point.
Okay.
If we go that far. So, it's another thing too, to figure out what are, what are our limits, because it's, you kind of run into a ditch road at that point.
Right.
So, it's, we'll have.
Is there some place, you know, the county was supposed to fix that, the railroad, um,
Yeah.
east of there?
Mhm.
And it's not fixed. I mean, I think they did something to it. Looks, it's a little bit better, but it really, that whole area, of course, I know we're not responsible for that, but it makes a difference when you try, if we're gonna have a nice road there, it'd be nice to have your car not beat up when you go where the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
On further east.
There's a lot of truck traffic that comes up that way.
Mhm.
Are you thinking route that down Simpson and, and they're gonna come all the way around Marymount?
Simpson, and we were thinking, we were thinking North Street. That would be the main, the main route here. Um, that's a challenge with the county, because I think they've signed North Street as no truck, so it's, that would be a, have to work something out with them, because, yeah, I don't know else we'd do. I guess Simpson to Old Forty would be probably the best truck route. We thought local traffic, um, would probably do it, and we've, we've thought about sections, so we'd, we'd do this section, which is the major maintenance section first. That's curbs on both sides, the retaining wall and a sidewalk. That's probably the biggest section. And then, the section from here to here would be another phase, which keeps access to the Country Club, you know, via this way for a while. If you're just doing, if you're just closing it right here, you can get to the Country Club on, um, is that, um, Crestview and Little Park Road there. So, that would keep access there. And then, when we actually did this section, then access would be through here. So, we could, we felt like we could keep access to the Country Club pretty reasonably on this project, but as far as truck traffic into town, that will be a, that'll be a good question, topic we're gonna have to look at here pretty quick.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions for staff?
When, when would it start?
Looking at.
Twenty seventeen, but when?
Twenty seventeen construction, and that's.
Early?
I don't know. We, we have, we've, we want to get the plans done, because there's a lot of utilities in here, and really, we have to meet with, you know, a lot of property owners and the, and the Country Club and Marymount and get it designed. So, our plans show us getting done with them in, um, early December, so, we could bid at any time after that, and that's, it's a little, I don't know if you've read the paper lately, but it's a little bit of a, the county, actually, right now is trying to guess when asphalt prices will be the lowest. So, it is, it's, you can kind of gamble on that. I don't know. It was interesting discussion, because we bid ours early, and, you know, I don't know if we got the best price on asphalt, but it is a, you want to really, this is an asphalt, this will be an asphalt project, so we'll want to bid at the time when the asphalt guys can do it, which will be, usually it's more summer than it is early spring in that case, so I would, I would think we'd wait till maybe summer, but we'll have to see about that next year, looking at workloads. And sometimes it's easy to bid early, but also put the schedule out farther, so we could possibly do that.
Okay.
Summer gives you the longest days and the best weather for it, basically.
Especially if your detours are on gravel roads.
Yes, that's true.
Were there several other design firms that bid this, or?
Yeah, and it, it's a, they're a qualifications-based selection, so we had Wilson Company and Cow Valley and most of the local firms.
So, all were in that same area, general area, eighty-seven thousand?
Mhm. Yeah, they all had a lot of different ideas on, you know, overlaying a concrete road. Should we put, you know, something over the top of it? Lochner came up with kind of the best approach, looking at a geo-grid with, over the concrete, with asphalt over the top of it, to try to minimize the reflective cracking that comes up when you overlay a concrete road. It's typically, the cracking is gonna reflect through eventually, but if you can mitigate it some, they kind of had a neat approach for that, so that was one of the reasons that we selected them.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll accept public comment if there's any at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll, uh, bring it up for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution sixteen seven three three one, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract for engineering design services with Lochner, Inc., um, for Country Club Road improvements, City Project six three one four three.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve resolution number sixteen dash seven three three one. Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That motion carries four zero.
Item seven point six, resolution number one six dash seven three three zero, adopting the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty capital improvements program.
Okay, great. Mr. France? Now, no one can take this project out since we've. Leave this one alone. Mr. France?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Uh, it's time now to adopt the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty capital improvement program budget. We, uh, covered, uh, uh, much of this in concept, a study session, I believe, in December, and we've been, um, working on it off and on, along with lots of other stuff since then. It's now ready. The, uh, plan has been reviewed by, by the Planning Commission. Uh, they did attach their resolution that they adopted in connection with that review. This is a fluid plan. It invariably changes as we're working on it and throughout the year, and so, we, uh, you know, you kind of get used to that. But it's not set in stone necessarily, although, by and large, the, uh, the outline of the plan has always remained, uh, fairly, uh, stable. Uh, one significant change that's been made to the plan this year since we first reviewed it is we have moved the community field house from a further review status, uh, to a two thousand sixteen project. It did have a modest effect, uh, on a proposed tax levies for the bond interest fund, uh, starting in two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty, not nineteen twenty like it says in the blue sheet. Apparently, I was wishing for the flapper era or something. Uh, water and sewer projects proposed in the plan have been incorporated into the five-year rate study, which, again, we, uh, ran through the State Commission review and adoption, uh, in December. Cash finance projects in the plan, um, assume that the amounts of operating cash for capital improvements, uh, remain relatively stable, uh, over the next five-year period. And finally, a material portion of the financing is made available through the special sales tax, which, as it stands right now, sunsets in mid-two thousand nineteen. The sales tax performance, uh, or, um, the sales tax portion of the fund is, uh, is pretty much, uh, spoken for by the various projects between now and two thousand nineteen. Action at this time would be to pass the resolution adopting the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty capital improvement program budget, and the commission may, of course, make any final changes that you would deem to be prudent at this time.
Okay.
And I would stand for questions.
All right, questions for staff?
On the community indoor field house, uh, the funding source listed here is four point five million dollars?
It is four, it is, lists as four point five million dollars in terms of, uh, our contribution, with another four point five coming from the private sector.
Sorry. If the total price is more than nine million dollars and some of the additional bonding authority has to be utilized, how does that affect?
Uh, that would have the, uh, like I said, the plan is fluid.
Right.
Uh, that would, if, if we have to issue more bonds, that would affect future tax levy, uh, to some extent.
Was any, off the top, you had to figure if, if we had to bond up to the entire amount of? Memories fail him to seven or seven point five?
Seven, seven.
Commissioners, a couple of things to think about when we're referring to the tax levy. That's, that's an assumption you can't absorb, but the tax levy is just an internal allocation of the tax levy we have. If you can't do all things with it, then you have to consider changing it, but, uh, that's, that's pretty far out. The, uh, what we wanted to be sure, when Rod asked this question, we said, let's re, let's reflect it with the information we know is for, is certain today, and that's what we did. So, what happens is, is let's say the facility comes in a little bit higher. There may be some other funding source. It may, may not be city budget at all, whatever it is. Um, if there is, and we feel that, uh, it makes sense to bring this back to you and do a quick amendment, we'll bring it back and do a quick amendment to, uh, reflect that, uh, whatever the cost might be, and also the funding source.
Yeah. I, I would add that if, if you look down to the cover matter on the plan itself, it does reference that one mil is equivalent to about four and a half million dollars in improvement over a fifteen-year term. Field house is projected at twenty years, so, you know, it would be somewhat less than that. Uh, so, you know, essentially, a, you know, a million-dollar change would be about a quarter mil. Would be a rule of thumb. I hope that answers your question.
Very well, thank you.
Well, when we're, when, when looking at these, um, the levy rates, and it takes that quarter jump in two thousand twenty, because they're seven, seven point oh straight through, tw, starting in two thousand sixteen, historically, where does that seven point oh rate with, say if we go back twenty years?
Um, back in the, uh, as far as I can remember here in Salina, in the late nineteen nineties and early two thousands, it was probably about five mils. Uh, it declined to about four mils at one point. If you look back even further, though, to the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties, it was sometimes as high as eight or eight and a half. Uh, in other words, it, it has, it has fluctuated, um, a bit over time, depending on, uh, you know, cash from other, other sources. In the late nineteen nineties and very early two thousands, primarily the late nineteen nineties, we had, uh, a, a good cash flow coming in from the sales tax. At that time, it wasn't all taken up by, you know, other, other items that have now grown, and so, we were able to contribute, um, for example, on the Magnolia Overpass construction back in the late nineties, I believe we contributed a half million dollars in cash to that project, which helps keeps, keeps the future mil levy down. So, it, 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 it kind of depends on the other circumstances in the community at the time. Uh, right now, we're, we are stressed, cover operating expenses with, with our, uh, normal resources, and so, we're unable to contribute cash to some of these capital projects like we did during that period of time.
Okay. And is that point two five jump in reflective of anything in particular? I mean, it's, it's not necessarily the field house funding, or?
Probably can't.
Well, it, it, it happened, it occurs when I factor the field house into everything else.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so, I, but, yeah, you can't really say that's the field house. There's a lot of other things in the plan too that might adjust between now and then.
Right. Uh, but, but I mean, just in the sense that that was, that was added to the plan. Did we in any way take anything out, or does the sub-CIP last?
I, I did not remove anything from the plan at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, the Commissioners, that's a, an assumption based on, of course, the cost of the projects, how they're funded, cash versus debt service and so forth, the availability. And, and you could look at that a lot of ways. You could say, rather than look at it from a levy rate perspective, you could just say, from the general fund, which is a tax fee-supported fund and so forth, you could look at it and say, okay, seven mils. One mil is worth about four hundred and twenty thousand.
Four hundred and twenty, four hundred and fifty thousand.
So, you're looking about, what, three million dollars. Roughly, your, your capital improvement plan is supported by about three million dollars of tax-supported funds. That's another way of looking at it. We always like to convert it into that. It goes back to the old budgeting laws that may come back again. Quite honestly, when the state, uh, had different budgeting laws, and so, you would, you would set certain things out over here and show the mil rate, uh, you would actually say, kind of show a mil rate attributed to it. And so, when you look at this, one project coming in under budget, and it, you could carve that out in a heartbeat, uh, interest rates being higher, and it could be seven point five. Uh, so, there's a lot of assumptions built into the pro forma. So, Rod kind of puts all the assumptions into the pro forma, and then it kind of kicks that out in essence.
Yeah.
But when you're within a quarter, it's, it's almost, it's nominal. It's not really.[1762.89]
Well, I just ask the question because it, it seems that if we're wanting to add something in that we hadn't planned on, I tend to like to try to find something that we might be able to take out, or is there nothing that... What are the feelings on, what's expendable here? I mean, obviously, everything is, but...
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, again...
That would, that would be appreciable, at least enough that it would make it worth the trade-off.
Yeah. One way to look at it is to look at your, basically, your total general fund budget. You look at everything in there. You have your operating budgets, which is a good part of it. You have your debt service, which is a good part of it, your cash capital, all of that. And you say, okay, what is our, overall, our revenues in excess of our expenses projected to be, let's just say for 2016? Okay. At the end of 2015, roughly a little over a couple hundred thousand dollars to the good. I believe that's correct, isn't it, Rod, when we looked at the year-end?
Yeah.
Not audited, just kind of the fairly rough, but $200,000 to the good. So let's presume that at the end of 16, that that's an, that we're at least, well, maybe the same, $200,000 to the good. Now, I can't say that for sure at this point. It's too early. But, but if that was the case, you could say, oh, there's, theoretically, if you were meeting all of your financial goals with that, in other words, if your fund balance has hit its target, if you were, anything else that you'd like to do operationally is being satisfied, you would say, oh, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars extra above and beyond a balanced budget that we could allocate to something else. And so then you'd have excess dollars. It would be looked at as excess. At this point, it's, it's a question of each year, it's still, it's positive, our trend financially in the general fund's positive, but it's, it's a little bit narrower 15-year in than I thought it might be. Actually, I was expecting a little bit more than 200. So you are correct in the sense that if you said, okay, there's a major project, and you, let's just say, a $1 million project or something, that you could attribute a debt service to, to say that I wanted to add a $1 million project in, you're correct in that the proper thing to do would be to take something out first, because we would say, for this year, or even next year, with what we know, we don't know that you could absorb it very easily. And then you might be able to, but we just don't know it yet. We're pretty, we're pretty even right now.
Okay, because we went through that whole process on, during the budget.
Yes.
Process on our, on our annual budget. And because it kind of goes back to, would we normally, if we hadn't added the fieldhouse in this year, would we be probably looking at 2015 where we look, or 2020, were we looking at about six and a half percent, or 6.5 mils? Because we...
I believe it was six and a half to six and three-quarters through that period.
Okay, all right. That's what I was getting at, is that...
Yeah, you had around a $300,000 debt service based on $4.5 million.
Okay. So we weren't, like, projecting it to be seven, 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 seven?
No, no.
It was less?
No. It was, it was a little bit less than that.
Okay.
And you have to realize that when I do that projection, I, I round it to a quarter mil, simply for a matter of convenience. So it, you know, there's a little bit of rounding there.
Because it's about, what, three-quarters of a mil for the, for, four and a half million?
Yeah.
About three-quarters of a mil?
Yeah, that's about right.
Well, I think there's some things on here we could take out if we wanted to. I mean, the East Crawford Recreation Area lighting is $425,000.
Well, I wouldn't take that out because...
Well, but there's...
Commissioners, you can, you can take everything out. I'd make a Rickmandation that if you are serious about taking anything out, we have a study session and talk through the projects. Because, for example, I can address most of those. The lighting, our lighting appears fine, but it doesn't meet current lighting standards. It's at an age where we have issues with reliability, and when you replace, when you have lighting, it's expensive. When you replace it, it's expensive, but at some point, you have to replace what you have. So we think that we've gone probably even a little further than the real life of what that replacement should be. So, but you could take, that's just an example. You could take any of those projects. I would, I would say that if there is something that you would like to add, that you know, that you have consensus on, that you'd like to add, and you're asking about the affordability and what could come out, that that's a little longer conversation we could have tonight.
Well, and I, and I brought it up, knowing that, being that we have five years' worth of projects to look at, it's not necessarily, what do we take off of this 2016?
Right. And the other thing is, is when Rod says it's fluid, a lot of aspects are fluid. For example, when you approve your budget, and in this case, your capital improvement budget, you have the ability at any time to say, "Staff, can we bring that back?" As long as we haven't committed financially to a project, we haven't bid a project, and, you know, bonds or whatever that might be. You have the ability to amend your capital improvement plan at any time as well.
Right.
So please keep that in mind.
And I think it would be a good thing to do, once we do end up getting the final prize for the fieldhouse, bonding for that, knowing exactly what that is instead of that floating.
Yeah. Any, anytime, whether, whatever project it might be, doesn't really matter. If you're going to get a major surprise in here, we'll bring back the broader conversation, because again, you have to decide if, if there's another funding source. And if it is a tax-supported source, if it isn't, it's not necessarily relevant. But if it is, then what effect does it have on the capital improvement plan, and what would you need to do to, to absorb it? So certainly, we would bring that back if that was an issue with that or any project that we have.
Okay. Great. Any further questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay, no more questions? Great, thank you. And we'll open it to public comment at this time. Okay, and no public comment at this time, and we'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 16-7330, adopting the 2016-2020 capital improvement program budget.
Second.
Great, thank you. I have a motion and a second to adopt the 2016 through 2020 capital improvement program budget and approve Resolution Number 16-7330. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries four to zero.
Item 7.7, Resolution Number 16-7329, establishing and amending fees in the comprehensive fee schedule related to emergency medical services.
Mr. France, again?
Mayor and Commissioners, we periodically will, will evaluate our EMS fees in comparison to cost of service, as well as what our reimbursement rates are from various third-party, third-party providers. And mostly, you know, the bulk of, of that is handled through Medicare and Blue Cross Blue Shield with, with the EMS service. And we try to set our rates to where we can recover the maximum amount, amount they will pay, but not set them so high that it transfers disproportionate costs to those who don't have coverage. In other words, we try to keep it pretty reasonable and fair. And there are a couple of, of items in the fee schedule that we feel need to be adjusted at this point, and we have recommended that we do so. Revenue collected from this source in 2015 was about $1,850,000. That recovers about two-thirds of the expenses, maybe a shade more than that. The remaining third of the expense is recovered through a countywide mil levy that Sleen County levies on behalf of the service. And they typically will pay a somewhat of an operating supplement, as well as they, they purchase the ambulances, which cost us on the order of, you know, $190,000 to $220,000 each, depending on the circumstances. And then there's also ancillary equipment that has to be replaced from time to time. And I can attest that that stuff's not cheap. You know, it is, medical equipment is, is very, very sensitive, and it is, it is pricey to replace. We did make one, one change for standby services in that we now have one event in which we've been requested to provide standby services, and it requires not only the ambulance unit and a crew, but because of the logistics of the location, we require a, basically, an ATV-type vehicle with a second crew to be able to go in and recover somebody if there should, an event should happen. And so we've made an adjustment to the fee for that to accommodate some of the cost, at least, associated with the second crew and provision of an additional vehicle.
Are, are those like football games?
Football games, community events, you know, the car show, sled, sled drag races. We normally have, you know, a unit on standby. There are others also, but a lot of them are games.
This round-trip transport, is that, that went up quite a bit. I mean, is that, I understand what that's for, but does Medicare cover any of that? No.
Depends on the circumstances, I think, you know. And I, I couldn't sit here and tell you what Medicare covers, doesn't cover. It, it really depends on what they consider to be medically necessary. And, you know, it is possible they might, might cover a round-trip transport.
As long as it's just not just, and if they use some sort of medical care with that person, probably.
Yeah, and it, and it depends if this is the only way that person can be transported.
Right.
And there are not alternative ways that might be less expensive, then they may cover it. The attempt there was, I think, to bring the round-trip transport in line with the one-way transport, and essentially make the fee proportionate.
Yeah, the round-trip transport would, of necessity, also incur a waiting chart time, assuming the person's only being transported.
Yeah, assuming they had to wait for an extended period of time, yes, it, it probably would.
Only as I mentioned, the description says that they, they return during the same trip.
Yeah, yeah. And to be honest with you, I'm not sure how those occur. You know, you know, I suppose there could be waiting time. I can't imagine that you take somebody and, and return within five minutes, you know. That's just not the way it works, so.
The, in the blue sheet, you have the total revenue collected in 2015 was $1,850,000.
Roughly, yeah.
What, what does that equate to in a cost recovery? Like, is that...
It's about two-thirds.
About two-thirds?
Yeah. Two-thirds of the expenses that we charge directly to the service. Okay. So it would not charge, for example, the availability we have to respond with rescue vehicles from the fire department and so on. That is something above and beyond what we recover through EMS fees. That's part of the fire service. It does not recover full costs of management of the system.
Right.
But for the EMTs, for the ambulances, for the materials and supplies we use, it, it does, it's about two-thirds.
Okay. And how, how, how are the reimbursements? I mean, I know, and you probably are familiar with Medicaid and Medicare reimbursements and their schedules and everything, but on, on things like this, how, how are they about reimbursements on that? I mean, are they, is the, is the climate of those reimbursements likely to get better, worse? Is it favorable, not favorable to what we're...
It depends in part on the provider. You know, Medicare, Blue Cross Blue Shield pay fairly quickly if you get the paperwork submitted correctly, you get all the right codes and the right locations, and you, you know, you've got to, you've got to meet their standards. And if you, you know, code the service for the right, right stuff, you know, the turnaround is, is relatively good. With Medicaid services, sometimes they will do a slowdown, depending on how much money they've got available, you know. And that can sometimes stretch a little bit. Private insurers, I, you know, we, we don't have a lot of that, but, and I really couldn't address how, how they, how they pay. But again, everybody, all the insurers, if, if you talk to our billing clerk, she would probably tell you horror stories about, you know, not getting the right codes in the right spots, or having one, one, one provider requiring something different than the other one. All of that is supposed to be, being smoothed out with, with, you know, everything's going digital now, and they're supposed to be getting some standardization in that, in that area. And I think it is better.
Okay. Because I look at some of, I look at some of these fees and the increases we're talking about, and they look like a lot of them are very, not just equipment, taking equipment offline, but labor as well, pretty...
Yeah.
Equipment and labor intensive.
It is, it is labor-intensive, yeah.
Okay.
There's no doubt.
And one thing to think about, Commissioners, when it's best for a advanced life support ambulance service like ours to do these, most of these, the ones in which you need that type of care, because you have good continuity of care and quality of care, that's, that's a good thing. However, the impact to that is, is that when we do that, if we, if, we obviously have to back up for, either, either have someone off-duty do it, or if someone on-duty does it, someone off-duty has to come in and back up, because you don't want to compromise your response in your community. And so theoretically, didn't have anybody available off-duty, and an on-duty crew, one of the four crews had to do this, then you have one of your four crews way out of position. They're not going to be responding for quite some time on a transfer. You don't want to do that. But what that means is there's a cost to back up, which is exactly what you're saying. It's not just equipment. It's a labor cost as well, labor and benefits and so forth.
Right.
So we try to figure that in and make sure that with these rates, that we're not going backwards with those rates. Keep in mind also, just like any medical provider, when you're talking about reimbursement, Medicare, any federal reimbursement, you're going to get a fraction of the actual cost. And so it's unfortunate, but when you look at the total rates, you're looking at the total, kind of the equalization of that factor in there as well.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? Okay, don't see any. Thank you. Public comment at this time? Seeing none, bring it back for action.
I would just like to say one thing. It's...
Yes, sir.
You know, look at the cost. I was sitting here figuring out the cost of a one-way ride from our hospital to KU Med. I came up with $22.35, which is still cheaper than a helicopter. But the, you know, the one thing we do have here is availability of service. Very often, we wait three and four hours to get patients from an hour and a half wait, because there's no crew in that other city, or they have one crew on duty, and they can't send their one crew, because they'd have no protection. So we are somewhat blessed here to, to have the resources that we can actually send a crew out of town. It looks expensive, but when you add up what they're doing on, on the trip, it, well, it is expensive.
And change in health care affects this, because when you think of the capacity of Salina Regional Health Center versus maybe a small rural medical facility, and they don't have the ability to provide a level of care, maybe they could provide whatever the standard level of care was 20 years ago at that time, but things have changed, circumstances have changed, funding has changed and so forth. They can't today, so therefore, it puts more pressure on the transfer aspect of medical care. And that may likely continue, because we are seeing quite a bit. Dr. Davis could, could tell you more from that perspective, but we are seeing more of a consolidation of medical services, at least with a hub situation with larger medical care facilities.
And, you know, I get to see crews from many places, and I tell you, we, the guys and gals here are very well-trained. This is a crack crew here in town.
Well put. Best in Kansas, at least for...
And that was even before they got, I'm, I'm so proud they got the award, but they're, they're good.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Move approval of Resolution Number 16-7329, establishing and amending fees in the comprehensive fee schedule related to emergency medical services.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second to approve Resolution Number 16-7329, establishing and amending fees in the comprehensive fee schedule relating to emergency medical services. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carries four to zero.
Item 7.8, First Reading Ordinance Number 16-10825, granting a telecommunications franchise to NexTech, Inc.
Mr. Gates?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think this will be a fast, easy one for you. Cities historically provide franchise agreements for services in which the utility, the private utility, would need to use the public roadway in accordance with state law, and, and local regulations that you're allowed to have under state law. We've done that before with, with our typical electric service, gas service and so forth, but also with telecommunications. NexTech is requesting a telecommunications franchise. The franchise fee is at 5%. We looked in light of the moving our electric to 6%, but state law limits you at 5% for that. The last one we did, which was a telecommunications, was Wildflower Communications, which is now called Zayo. The company name's changed. We've, we have the application fee of $2,000, which is our estimate based on the time, or the cost that it takes to process that. You have to be pretty close to that. We've looked. They are, the negotiation in this case is pretty easy. They, nor regulations, are comfortable with those regulations. NexTech already has a franchise, franchises to provide telecommunications services in other Kansas cities. Hayes, Plainville, and Phillipsburg are three examples of those. Again, if they get a franchise, they'll have limited or regulated access of a city roadway for their telecom infrastructure. And because it's a pure telecommunications, it's a franchise for them to have their infrastructure and for them as a company to use it for telecom purposes. And that's typically internet and telephone. It is not what you'd call a competitive infrastructure provider. The difference is, is putting it in the ground for someone else to use, whether you sell it or lease it. That's a difference. Now, if they wanted to do that, there's not, they just need to come back. We could look at amending the franchise. It's not a big deal, but this is specific to the service being provided. The franchise agreement is the same that, that's been brought in front of you for the most part before, except I think this is a little more specific about limiting the competitive infrastructure piece without coming back. But you have your typical definitions, compensation, reference to the right-of-way regulations and so forth. The term of it, it would commence upon second reading in your publication of the ordinance. So once the ordinance is effective, the term would officially start, go through June 30th of 18, and after that date, then it provides for annual automatic renewals unless either party provides 90 days notice. And after that date, then it provides for annual automatic renewals, unless either party provides 90 days notice for a total term not to exceed 20 years. That's consistent with our other franchises as well. The, in this case, when you think of the application of Kansas law, you have somewhat limited discretion because of state law when you look at adopting or denying a contract. In particular, we, if they, if they comply with statutory requirements, then we need to look at deeming it a reasonable, a reasonable exercise of their rights that are given to them. And absent a compelling public interest necessitated by public health, safety, and welfare, we'd need to approve this. Staff, in this case, we don't see any compelling public interest that would cause you not to want to approve it. As a matter of fact, this has probably been the easiest one we've dealt with so far. Also, once it's approved, they'll have to meet all of our right-of-way management requirements. We have ordinance that deals with right-of-way management, and it talks about a placement of things in a right-of-way permitting, and the protocols and so forth. That way, we can manage the multiple entities. And if they're in the same right-of-way, we can manage that, and we can manage the technical aspect of that. So we have an ordinance that's fairly new, that's been in place for a couple of years, I think a couple of years, two or three years, that we've been using for that, and they already know that they need to comply with that. So there are no issues with this. We do think, from a strategic plan perspective, that competition provides folks with choice, and hopefully some competitive pricing as well. And that's not a bad thing. Again, from a fiscal impact, we'd be looking at 5% of the gross receipts. Doesn't necessarily mean you would see a 5% increase. It all depends on their market share, and quite honestly, it depends on how saturated the market is as well. If, for example, they come in and through competition, they're selling to people who would have bought it from someone else, you may not see any difference at all. If, because of competition, we're able to make the pie a little bit bigger, because more people decide they, they want the service that otherwise wouldn't, then you might see some growth in it. But I don't want you to think that there's automatically going to be a 5% increase in your franchise revenue there, because there won't be. A couple options here. Approve the ordinance number 16-10825 as provided, which would allow for approval of telecommunications franchise with Next Tech, Inc. Don't approve it. If you don't, obviously we'll have a lot more conversations that will need to occur pretty soon. But if you have any questions also, comments or questions, we'd be happy to address those as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions for staff? Quick question in regard to telecommunication franchises. I know that when, and I don't know if it was Willow, if it was someone else, but maybe if you could help me out with, when we redid the management, right-of-way management stuff, I know there was quite a bit of concern over the, the units that were put right on the pole with the box, and then the.
Distributed antenna systems, the DAS, the small, yeah.
Okay, yeah, the DAS. Would, would that have any, would, would, would they be involved in any of that type of right-of-way type work?
No, then that's not what they're asking for in this particular case.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And if they do, I mean, we have, we have our regulations in place, and we do have a co-locating requirement. It's all circumstantial, we have to look at the circumstances. Just, just to make you aware, the state legislature has been dealing with a bill that would try to strip some of the local discretion and authority to deal with that. And we've communicated on that bill, and we've said, you know, we, we get the need for competition. We know everybody loves the services that they get. We get all of that, but people just don't like seeing those in their neighborhoods, so.
Right.
Stripping us of that ability to require some of the simplest co-location, or some reasonable regulations on size placement for need, or somehow disguising them a bit, we don't go too far with that. We would like to preserve those rights.
Okay, yeah, I, I know that, I've heard from some constituents on that, that it was troublesome. And, and so I just wanted to, I like the answer that it's, it's not involving that, just, I think there might have been a concern that there would be some proliferation of, of those, and they'd be popping up everywhere with the more franchises that get involved with that. So I appreciate that that's not a concern here, so. Okay, great. Any further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll take public comment at this time, if there's any. Okay, and seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 1610825, which provides a telecommunications franchise to Next Tech, Inc.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 16-10825, which provides a telecommunications franchise to Next Tech, Inc. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Item 7.9, restrictions on the use of spring steel animal traps in the city limits. 7.9A, first reading ordinance number 16-10826. 7.9B, declare a compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading of the ordinance on the same day. And 7.9C, second reading ordinance number 16-10826.
Great, Mr. Toit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This action requests the adoption of the ordinance to allow our flood control foreman, who is now a licensed fur harvester, to work with the director and the employees of the animal shelter, one employee which is also a licensed fur harvester, to work under a recently acquired agreement with the Kansas Department of Parks and Wildlife to perform animal control on our levee system. This may include methods up to and including the use of spring steel traps. This would not be the only method that is employed for the, for the removal of any such animals. During a recent inspection, our flood control supervisor found multiple holes in several different locations on the east and southern portions of our levee. In particular, the levee parallel to South Ohio from Waterwell to Mentor, there are five large animal holes. An area south of East Schilling Road near Johnson Sand, there are three large holes. And just off of Centennial Road, south of Vortex, where the levee runs out and runs into agricultural property, there are six additional holes. These holes are significant, and they cause a tremendous amount of damage to our levee system. At best, it would result in an M-rating from the Corps of Engineers on an inspection. At worst, they would cause what is called piping, where, when the levee is under pressure from water, water is, will go to its, to the easiest place, and it would fill those holes, and very likely cause catastrophic levee failure, or could cause catastrophic levee failure at worst. As a result, staff believes it is essential that we begin trapping these large animals, which we now believe to be badgers, or any animal that might be occupying those holes as quickly as possible. The holes may rain, are typically two to three feet deep, anywhere from five to 30 feet long, and up to a foot in diameter. So you can imagine the damage that this causes to the levee. I want to emphasize that we are, we are not simply planning to immediately deploy spring steel traps on the levee whenever a large animal hole occurs. One of the first and most important things that we would do is look at the food source. Since 2009, we have trapped 707 pocket gophers. We average about 101 pocket gophers a year. And over the last three years, those numbers are drastically falling. And that is largely due to successful trapping efforts. It seems that we have a new food source, voles. And so we will have to take the necessary steps to eliminate a vol, the vol population from our levee. I've been informed, fortunately, I want to say, we are also, today's been a day where we've talked about the community being blessed. We're also blessed with having a subject matter expert who has been at our disposal. He helped us develop our first rodent abatement program. Mr. Charlie Lee, KSU Extension Specialist and Wildlife Instructor, Wildlife Control Instructor. And he has graciously came today as well, in case you have any additional questions that I might not be able to answer. But he has, went out to the levee, he's looked at them, he's verified the holes, and he's given us several recommendations to help us develop the plan to move forward. I also want to point out that we are very cognizant of the fact that we have people who use the levee for recreational purposes. And we want to be able to protect not only the people who use it, including parents and their children, but also their animals, dogs and cats, and, and any non-target species that, that might wander into these holes. So my staff has developed a way that we think may help prevent that kind of accidental trapping of animals, and we would employ that as well. Prior to employing the steel traps, we would also, we also intend to live trap the areas to help capture any non-target species, dogs, cats, or any other creature that might decide to try to use these holes for either temporary or permanent lodging. And I think, and then, and then once that is complete, the levee is, the levee takes a great deal of time to repair. We will have to scarify that area. We will have to collapse the tunnels. We will have to tamp all that soil out and then roll it, and then we'll have to do moisture and density tests to make sure that the levee returns to its previous performance level. I think with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions for staff?
Well, I have to.
Go ahead.
I was away all last week until last night. I didn't get a chance to Google what a vol is. I'm from Washington DC, and I don't know if we have any on the streets there. Could you tell me what one is?
If you were to Google it, as, as I did when I first learned of them, it looks like a slightly oversized mouse with a shorter tail. Maybe twice the size of what you would see as a typical mouse.
I'm not in favor of spring steel traps, and I'd like to have our, our animal person come up and visit with us a little bit about it, as well as Mr. Lee.
Thanks for having me. Spring steel traps, if you've ever seen one, are square, that uses pressure in two springs to squash the back of the neck of an animal. So it's a lethal trap, and that's why I understand your concern. They have been prohibited in city limits because of that, because of the animal welfare aspect, but also because of the public safety issue that they pose. The problem with badgers is that they will not go into a live trap. They may go into a leg-hold trap, but you also are going to catch a lot of non-target species in a leg-hold trap, which would be, would be a live trap, would be a leg-hold trap. A snare, we, we considered using snares. They're more cost-effective, but the damage that an animal will do in a snare, a dog will typically break its leg in a snare. So what we've learned from looking at this is that we can live trap every non-target species, which a badger is not going to go into one of those traps, and typically a fox will not go into a trap either, a live trap. And then, once we've eradicated every non-target species, the most humane method that we have, we would be forced to use a Conibera spring steel strap to take care of badgers. And this is pretty typical of this situation. So we've looked at everything we can to mitigate it, and we've looked at every other option. We feel that this is probably the only option, and it, and it will be a lethal option.
The dyke's been out there for how many years? I haven't heard anything about this before.
Development, I would say development's brought badgers into town. There's never been a need to use spring steel traps, because everything we've, we've been catching will go into a live trap. We use live traps. We've caught 500 wild species last year in live traps, and, but we've never been trapping for badgers. And I don't know whether it's development outside of town, it could be to do with water source, it could be to do with crop success or failure, local drought, anything like that will move a population. And once they find a good source, then they move in. And I think that's what we've seen in the levee, is that it's a success.
You said the spring steel strap, or trap, won't catch badgers, right?
It will, that's the kind.
Oh, it will?
Yeah.
Thought you said it won't.
No, it will, it's the live trap.
Yeah.
Yeah. A badger's too clever to go into a live trap, and as a fox is too clever as well. So we can use the right size, spring steel trap, they come in many sizes. We would use the appropriate size for a badger. The other possibilities that we've looked at is that if it's not dispatched quickly, animal control can be on hand to take care of that. Sometimes they fail, even when they do catch the right target species. So we think we have everything in line, but this would be something new. If you, if we weren't comfortable that the species was a badger, we could set trail cameras. That would be another option, if we weren't 100% sure. But Mr. Lee is a professor in this area, and we're pretty confident that he knows what he's talking about, about identifying the right species.
So once we catch the family of whatever badgers, whatever they are, then do we leave those steel traps out there, or do we take them out?
We would have to take them out. They have to be checked very often, the public safety hazard that they pose. We would have to stake those areas, label those areas, because anybody could reach in that hole, and it'd break your arm.
Yeah, I don't like those things. I, I remember one of our sheriff's deputies, I believe was, had his dog out, and they were, killed the dog, and it was a spring steel trap, and he was out hunting. And I don't think, he's probably not over that yet, that he lost his dog that way, so. I'm, I'm just not in favor of those at all.
Yeah, Commissioners, I think one thing to think about is that we'll, we'll use the expert advice we have. We'll start with the least impactful, but in the end, these are, they make large holes. And what happens is, is in your levee system, you have, we think of a levee system as breaking under a flooding situation up above, but can also do that from down below. We don't think about pressures underneath, but they're there as well. And any type of hole, especially a significant hole in there, creates an opportunity. When you think about a lot of ongoing rains, a lot of saturation, a softening of it. An example of that is, is they don't like the trees in there, because the trees die. The main reason is the trees die, the roots die, and then the, the live roots are solid, but the dead roots are not. And it creates a mechanism for the water pressure, and to pressure its way through and get into the levee. And once there's a breach, the whole levee, that point's going to disappear, and then that's going to be the open point. You have to keep the water outside, no matter what. So that's why this is kind of the ultimate approach, but we have to have the ability to do that. Otherwise, there's no guarantees. And instead of coming back with a minimally acceptable rating on our levee, the Corps of Engineers may come back with something else. And I don't know if that affects how FEMA looks at your levee, but it certainly affects, could affect long-term, the ability of the levee to protect the community from a 100-year flood, which is the most important thing that we, we have to deal with here.
There was a couple of things I didn't get to, that I think are worthy of sharing, too. We are, staff has talked about, we are looking at buying a boar scope with a 45-foot boar scope, so that we can actually run a camera inside these holes. There is a good possibility that we could set traps and never trap one of these badgers, because they may not be in the hole to start. This, this concept is based on the idea that we have a badger in one of the holes. Typically, there's two reasons they're there. They're either there to den and raise young, or they're simply digging at speed to catch prey, which in this case, I mean, it doesn't have to be just voles, it could be pocket gophers, it could be many several species of rodents. That's why I want to emphasize also that, that one of the first things we'll need to do is, is address the food source. So we have licensed pesticide applicators who can apply toxicants to kill voles, and we will do that. We, we put the appropriate amount of toxicant in the vol holes, and if we can eliminate the populations of voles, the badgers will not have, or technically, you would think that they would not have a reason to be there, if we can eliminate the, the food source. And that's, that's probably the, the primary way that we can eliminate these animals, is to eliminate the food source. But the current ordinance does not allow spring steel traps at all. And we may not have any other means to eliminate these, should our other methods fail. And we, we believe that we need that in order to get the levee restored to its proper performance level.
So I have this clear, the trap goes in the hole, and the lid goes over?
Over the hole.
Over the hole.
Yes, sir.
All right, and it's, the lid is down tight enough that a child who couldn't read would not be able to pick it up?
Oh, yes, yeah, a child would not be able to pull this out of the ground. There are two 26-inch, large, probably 5/8 inch thick pins that are driven, that will be driven in the ground and holding these lids down.
Any, serious question, but any animal rights organizations that would object to this being used?
I couldn't comment on that, I have no idea.
I know they would, but.
I, I would say that we live in an agricultural community, and I think that. And I think that it's not uncommon for agricultural communities to use not only trapping, but toxicants and several means in order to protect their property. And I would think that the investment that we have in our levy is something that we would want to protect along the same lines as our agriculture.
Let me, let me ask you this on the, on the, yeah, this, this, this is probably more a question for Jim. And that is, is the, it looks like your abatement program for the pocket gophers is particularly along the south and east portions. How widespread on the south and east where? And, and are the badgers in the same locations or are they isolated in certain areas or is it widespread?
The, the, we don't see a correlation between the location of pocket gophers and the location of badgers. So we, we, actually, Mr. Lee is the one who told me after touring the levy that it is, that all of the badger holes are located in pocket gopher colonies. I mean, not pocket gopher, I'm sorry, vol colonies.
Okay.
So it is, we feel very confident that they are eating voles. And that's the reason that they're there. And it's those three locations that I had mentioned, from Waterwell to Mentor on South Ohio Street.
Okay.
Where the, in particular, where the levy parallels South Ohio. The next one is East Shilling, so it's, it's the levy behi, next to Johnson Sand, if you will.
Okay.
And then the last one is, if you think of where Vortex is, in Centennial Road running south, the levy extends off of there and then just runs out back to a zero-grade elevation in a series of agricultural fields. And, and that area is particularly hit as well. What we had, have been doing is collapsing the holes and trying to restore the levy as much as possible so that we can determine whether or not these holes are active or whether they were just, you know, there and used for temporary lodging or whatever you will. And then, so today, that's when I, the, the holes that I reported, those were actually what they found today.
Okay, well, it sounds like for some of the, the areas that you mentioned, they don't sound to me like they're areas that have a high concentration of hikers and, and, you know, the levy trail gets a lot of use, but those aren't sections that seem to me that people.
No, they're, they're pretty remote areas.
Yeah.
So far, the badgers haven't invaded our community.
Right.
They, they are, they are remote. The, the Centennial area, there are three houses, I would say, within a half a mile of this particular location. I will say though, in fairness, that the flood control supervisor has seen occasional people walking out there with their dogs not on leash.
Right.
So it, it isn't unheard of, but it's certainly not like in an area where the hike and bike trail is, for example.
But the trap will be under one of these heavy lids?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Jim, would there be some form of a sign we could put there for someone could see that and realize?
Looks like it's on the lid.
I mean, there's, there's, there's ways to keep common sense people away.
But in addition to, we, we do have on the lid, we have Citius Alina logo and we also have do not remove. We have the two stakes driven in the ground more than two feet. But we can certainly add a sign that says, you know, and I would probably get some help with writing it, but something along the lines of a, you know, Citius Alina Active Trapping Area, please stay out or, you know, something along those lines. We could certainly put those signs up as well.
These are checked how often?
I'm sorry?
The trap sites would be checked how often?
On a daily basis. Yeah, we, we would not let those traps go more than, more than a single day. In, in fact, that would be how he would start his day. And he would probably check them more, more than once a day if necessary, especially when we first put them out until we get a very good feel for what we're doing.
Okay, all right. Well, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lee? I think we have it covered unless there's anything you'd like to add.
Don't have anything to add if there are no questions.
Okay.
Well.
Well, it's great to have an expert, thank you.
Well, just sent you here, what, what keeps the badger from seeing a trap if they're that smart and just building another way out?
We got to tip them off is what you're.
Right.
The question was what keeps a badger, why, why does a badger go through the trap?
Well, I mean, as if, well, is it smart enough to see it and know that's not the way to go and?
Not unless they've been trapped and missed at a previous time. The, the trap is called a body gripping trap. It has two narrow wires about, I'd say 16 gauge, 14 to 16 gauge wire, something like a coat hanger diameter. And they, they just think those are roots or twigs or something. And as they push through those, that's what activates the trap.
Well, I'm not worried about the badger. I just don't want any dogs or cats to get into them. So if they monitor, if you're monitoring them, then that's, that's fine.
I didn't mention that either, but these traps are right-sized for the target species. There are larger conibear traps that we are not using. These, these traps, by Kansas law, have to be a certain size. And these traps are under that maximum size. They are sized for the specific animal.
Is, is the badger the type of animal that would want to stay away from a lot of activity? I mean, is the habitat?
The badger is a, is a carnivore. They are not really fond of people, but they're not really scared of, of suburban-type environment. They would be much more common in an agricultural situation than suburban or urban-type environment. So they, they have to have access to deep soil. They dig about a cubic yard of soil a day. Most of the burrows that I observed today were food source holes, where they're just simply digging down to get a daily morsel and move on and find something else to eat. And they seldom use the same burrow, so that's why there's lots of digging on the, on the dyke system.
And the water source, is that a pretty?
They don't have to have a source of free water. They get it from what, what they're consuming.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Sure glad we got people like you.
But as far as, I mean, in a lot of parts, even in the center city, you see raccoons that are scavenger-type. They're not, do they have any scavenger-type tendencies that they would tend to move into?
Does a badger have a, is, is a badger a scavenger?
Well, would they have any of those tendencies? Whereas to say you remove that food source, would they start to look for other?
Yeah, they have a very varied diet, but primarily it's small burrowing rodents.
Okay. Well, good.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, do we have any public comment at this time? Yeah. Judy? You don't go walking your cat on the dyke, do you?
I was, Judy Larson, 2801 Ray Avenue. I was just going to thank you for not considering cats as a target. My question was, I'm animal, wild animal challenged. I don't know what a badger looks like. And I'm wondering if, if these would, if these traps would also be appropriate for coyotes? Or coyotes are too big or what? I'm just totally confused as to exactly what they'd be used for.
I think that they're not going to, the coyotes, I think, just aren't burrowing and causing that, that damage.
They'll be fine.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And they, they will only target those cats if they are either permanently or temporary lodging.
Okay, all right.
In those, in those holes.
If, if this doesn't work, we'll load up the holes with Hawkeyes and then we'll see what happens.
Right, exactly. The natural enemy of the, of the badger, of course. Little Big Ten humor there. Okay. Is any, any further comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 16-10826, amending Salina Code Section 776, spring steel straps, traps restricted. I didn't want to say that. Authorize wildlife control pursuant to Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks Regulation 115-16-5, Section 5, Part J, to enable certified city staff to conduct nuisance wildlife control in the interest of human health and safety concerns.
Second.
Great. Have a motion and a second to approve on first reading ordinance number 16-10826. Is there any further discussion at this time?
One question is the human health aspect of, well, what is the human health aspect?
Well, probably for the flooding.
So that would be the safety concern then?
Sure would.
Yeah.
Dyke fell in, why?
I do want it to imply that we were doing it for two reasons when we're only doing it for one.
Human health and safety.
We don't have any evidence that they're spreading any disease right now.
Yeah, I think it's health and safety, one, being one item, health and safety.
And it, it just, health and safety, simply because of what would happen to the levy should, should they be left unchecked?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I declare compelling public interest exists and to allow first and second reading of the ordinance on the same day.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second that a compelling public interest exists to have first and second reading on the same day. Any discussion on that, on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Mr. Mayor.
Opposed, carries four to zero. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 16-10821.
Eight twenty-six.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-six.
Two-six.
Twenty-six is what I thought.
Twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 16-10826. Any further discussion at this time, seeing none? We'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard?
Aye, motion carries four to zero.
Thanks, I'm sorry.
We'll move to, now, on to development business.
Item 8.1, first reading ordinance number 16-10824, amending section 2-208 through 2-211 and adding section 2-212 to the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance.
Okay, great. Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. If you recall, we introduced this item to you earlier in the month of February and the Commission took action only on the amendment to section 2-211. And that, that was enacted and then the remaining sections were held and were prepared for a submittal to the Lee District Board of Advisors. And they reviewed those changes at their February 18th meeting. And they did endorse the changes as drafted and proposed with the qualification that they were not in favor of the initiation of a certificate of compatibility application fee. The sentiment of the board was that there are other types of application fees that downtown property and business owners already pay, such as building permit and sign permit fees. And they did not want to see a, a new fee added. And so just to briefly summarize the, the changes, section 228, or 2208, just states that proposed work that is requiring a certificate of compatibility will first be evaluated by the matrix to determine whether it's an administrative or board item. Section 2209 spells out the requirements for completing and submitting an application. 2210 sets out the process for an administrative review. There's no substantive changes there. And section 2211, the primary changes there were to change the notification area. It's expanded to 200 feet and includes both business and record property owners. And then that section narrows who can appeal a decision to the city commission and would limit that right of appeal to a property owner or business owner in the Lee District instead of the current language, which is any person. Section 2212 transfers the authority for stop work orders from the building official to the zoning administrator. And as we mentioned, the Lee District Design Review Board recommended approval of these changes as presented at their January 29th meeting. And the Lee District Board of Advisors approved a motion endorsing the changes at their February 18th. And neither of them had any changes that they wanted to see made or done differently. The only comment from the Board of Advisors is they didn't want to see any sort of application fee created. And there currently is not one. Obviously, that, that's a decision for you all as a commission under your fee-setting authority, but that was their, their thoughts that they conveyed.
Was that contemplated before or was that kind of left there?
Well, we, in the drafting of this provision, there was language made in the, or made provision for a fee if the city commission so desired. When the, the review was transferred over from SDI to city staff, SDI had not been charging a fee and we did not institute a fee when we took it over. And so we do have postage and publication costs and things of that nature. But since 2001, when city staff has administered the board, we have not had an application fee from that point till now. But as part of the, the draft, the city attorney inserted a section there just making it clear that it's within the commission's authority to institute a fee for the application if you so desire.
Okay, what would the, what would that fee likely be? I mean, obviously, it's for, like you had spoke earlier about the NextTells, has a $2,000 fee, which is basically was for staff, time, cost recovery. What would a cost recovery application be for something like, like that?
Well, none, none of our fees that we charge for, for planning zoning applications recover all of our costs. What they try to do is just to be approximating in terms of reimbursing the city for any mailing costs. Or we have the Salina Journal charges publication costs for a public hearing notice. And we do, we do not advertise the hearings but, in the journal, but we do send letters out, so our primary direct cost would be postage.
What would be a recommended fee for something like that? What would it be similar to? And the only reason I would even propose a fee would be sometimes if you don't have an application fee, you get incomplete applications, you get, people drop applications after some time and, and it's just kind of nice that if it's a $15 application fee, it has, it's not. I'd like to see some sort of fee that we could at least recover something, but to where it's not significant enough to.
Yeah, if we were.
It wouldn't keep anybody.
If we were starting out, we would probably recommend keeping it at $50 or under to, to start something out. We have a number of applications that we do, like temporary use permits and home occupations that are $35 is the application fee. So if we had something in that range, I think that would be consistent with those items. If, if somebody wants to do a beauty salon in their home, they'd pay a $35 application fee for that.
Right. Okay.
Does the fee cover something other than what the tax revenue is already paying to provide that employee to do? I could see the postage and, and the listing in the paper being an additional expense that?
We don't, we don't recover our employee costs by our fees by any stretch in, in planning and zoning. But what we try to do is when we have direct costs like mailing costs or postage, we try to have our application fees be reflective of that part of it because those are, those are direct costs.
Because when the fees get to be too high, they become basically de facto taxes.
Right, and I, but I think that a conditional use permit fee or whatever, if it's 50 or 35 or whatever you said, a home occupation fee, that seems to me to be fairly in line with, and I can appreciate that SDI doesn't want to have a fee imposed, but they're not the ones that are going to be processing the application. So I think that a, I think that a minimal fee, and if it's 35, that sounds like, how many of these do you do a year?
I think last year, we had about 12 applications that went before the design review board or were approved administratively. Obviously, if activity level picks up in the downtown area, that there will be more. But last year, it was about 12.
Yeah, I think that that's, I mean, I, obviously. Yeah, I think that that's, I, I mean, I, obviously, if it's something that anybody else would consider, I would consider to keep it minimal and add a, add a thirty-five dollar recovery fee, so... Okay, any other further questions for staff?
That would take a separate action that we would bring back, is that correct, Greg? Uh, a fee resolution?
Yes, certainly, we, I assume a second reading could address that in the way you normally address amendments to the fee schedule.
Okay.
Okay, we could, we could bring something back to you to consider for second reading, if that's your desire.
Okay. All right, any further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, uh, bring it, uh, well, I'll open it for public comment if there's any public comment on this. I did not think so. Okay, uh, bring it back for action. Discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt, uh, the adoption of ordinance number sixteen one oh eight two-four, adoption of amendments to section two two oh eight and two two eleven and the addition of section two two twelve to the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number sixteen dash one zero eight two-four. Uh, adoption of amendments to section two dash two zero eight through two dash two eleven and the addition of section two dash two twelve to the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance. Any further discussion at this time? I've got a question for council, and what would, I'm assuming that that motion and second did not include any cost recovery or application fee or... Would that, was that the intention of the maker in the second?
No, I guess I thought that that would be brought back to us as a suggestion on second reading.
Okay.
We could amend it.
Well, I'm just, and I'm just...
And that's the same question that the city manager was talking about as well.
Okay.
The way that it's been addressed, if you look there in section two of the draft before you, there were three requirements in terms of initiating the application. So if I see there, I got one, what would be the line three under section two, two zero nine?
Okay.
Anticipated that one of those requirements was paying the application fee determined pursuant to section two dash two.
Okay.
Which, there hasn't been a fee determined, then I suppose there wouldn't be one, but if, I mean, where you want this to go right now, it anticipates that there would be a fee.
Okay, so that, then that would be included and we'd do that under second reading, figure that under second reading?
That's correct, that is your wish.
Okay. Okay, yeah, it sounds like that's, okay. Very good. Okay, so we have that motion in second. Any further discussion? Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries four zero. Thanks for the clarification on that.
Okay, um, item eight point two, report on petition number four three seven seven, request closure and vacation of Wayne Court as a public street north of Wayne Avenue. Eight point two A, first reading ordinance number one six dash one zero eight two-one. Uh, eight point two B, declare compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading of the ordinance on the same day. And eight point two C, second reading ordinance number one six dash one zero eight two-one.
Okay, great, Mr. Andrew.
Could I?
Yeah, excuse me, just a second.
Yes, sir.
Just for the purpose of, of record, uh, I'm an employee of Salina Regional Health, so I don't think it would influence my decision on this, but just for, in the interest of disclosure.
The, uh, I suppose we should ask, is that a matter of disclosure to the board?
Yes.
As well.
Yes.
That is efficient a way to make that disclosure.
Okay.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that...
Having made that disclosure, it's certainly appropriate for you to...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
The, uh, and I'm sorry, uh, you know, I'm very glad you mentioned that. Because I was tracking on the general nature of the vacation. Uh, the prohibition is in the making of a contract. One of the components of this project or this action is potentially entering into, uh, an access agreement, uh, to which the city is a part. So I think we want to be, uh, I think we want to be sure that you don't participate in any of that here. Agree. Frankly, the simplest way may very well be for you to not participate at all. Sorry, I had not processed that for you.
Should I step down?
Yes, I ask you to leave the room, please.
Okay.
We'll call you back.
About time we remember.
Yeah, we've had a break here anyway.
This should not be a very long item, I don't, I don't anticipate, so, okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, this is a report on petition number four three seven seven that was filed by Salina Regional Health Center requesting the closure and vacation of Wayne Court as a public street north of Wayne Avenue. And the area that is the subject to the petition is up on the screen and shaded here in blue. By way of history, this intersection didn't, used to look like this and it was redesigned, realigned and reconstructed in the year two thousand. And when the project was complete, the city found itself with surplus right-of-way on both sides of the realigned Belmont Boulevard. And, uh, this portion down here, the southern portion, was conveyed by the city commission to Bennington State Bank for landscaping enhancements and a, a parking lot expansion. You can see in this photo, the parking lot is not there, but they did an expansion in there and, um, in exchange for agreeing to extensively landscape that area, that southern portion was conveyed to Bennington State Bank. On the north side, uh, the puzzle was a little more complicated. We have Double J Enterprises is located in this building right here. And then we, at this time, we, at that time, we had Sunflower Bank there and the property that we were talking about as being considered surplus was in that location. Uh, the city was contacted by Sunflower Bank and they expressed interest in acquiring a portion of that right-of-way south of their building for expanded parking. Planning staff came up with the idea of, of basically packaging that area into a plat. And a plat of what's known as the Wayne Edition was, uh, developed in two thousand and two and that established the north line for Belmont here. It established the right-of-way boundaries for this Wayne Court cul-de-sac. It provided a mechanism for naming that as a new public street. It eliminated the right-of-way for Wayne Avenue that ran through here and it, um, provided and delineated easements. Um, this is one of the most utility-rich areas in the community. There are buried telephone lines, gas lines, storm sewer lines, and, uh, we also have water lines and an overhead power line. So, um, this, this map here depicts all the things that are underground that's, are running through this area. This is the plat of the Wayne Edition and Lot One, Block One here is owned by Double J Enterprises. Lot Two, Block One is owned by the City of Salina as a, a landscape island or very small pocket park. Lots Two and Lots One here are, um, were created to be transferred to, uh, Sunflower Bank. And in two thousand and four, the city deeded lots one and two here over to Sunflower Bank, subject to a conceptual site development plan and a deed covenant that limited use of this property to a surface parking lot area and landscaping around, around the perimeter of that area. In two thousand and fifteen, Salina Regional Health Center acquired, uh, the former Sunflower Bank building and are in the midst of a project to add on to that facility. And, uh, essentially, the footprint of the building would go from sixty-six hundred to seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty square feet. The total square footage of the three floors would be forty-seven thousand square feet. With the change in use and the expansion, uh, the need for parking went from fifty-five spaces to one hundred and forty-eight spaces. And so the petition that was filed was requesting a vacation of this right-of-way so that the cul-de-sac area could be utilized to develop additional parking. And in accordance with the policy that city commission first adopted in nineteen ninety-four, any requests that involves a permanent closure and vacation of a street is referred to the planning commission for a public hearing. So the planning commission held a public hearing on this and their charge was to look at emergency vehicle access, traffic flow and safety, and looking at impacts on land use and future development. Um, the, the plan is just to utilize this area here, so this roadway area is going to continue to be available. Uh, we'll provide emergency access, um, between the buildings to the east side of the, the South Gate Professional Building as well as the west side of, of this facility. There's also a fire hydrant back there. As far as traffic flow, you can imagine that this is a very low traffic street. There's no through traffic, almost all the vehicles using it are either accessing Sunflower Bank's parking lot or the parking lot that serves the, uh, side of the South Gate Professional Building. And elimination of this street would not affect the developability of any property. And so the planning commission held a public hearing on this on February second. Um, there was no one that appeared and spoke at the hearing, except for Mr. Mays, who was representing the petitioner. The planning commission recommended approval of the petition request, subject to three conditions. One of those was the execution and recording of an access easement enforceable by the city to ensure that this roadway connecting to Wayne was, continued to be available to serve South Gate Professional Building and also as a fire lane and for emergency access. The second condition was that the petitioner, Salina Regional Health Center, be responsible for the cost of removing the paving in that area. And then thirdly, that the area be retained as a public and utility drainage easement because of the number of utilities that are there. Uh, the planning commission made, uh, five findings. Those findings have been incorporated into the ordinance that is in front of you. We got quite a few comments from affected utilities. AT&T first objected to the vacation request because of their intensive fiber optic network, but they withdrew their objection, uh, when we said that a utility easement would be retained for their facilities. And so this comes to you with a recommendation from the planning commission. If you concur with their findings and recommendations in the attached ordinance, ordering the closure and vacation of Wayne Court should be approved. An access easement, uh, will be executed and recorded with the ordinance. Um, the, uh, to expedite the site work that is, um, being scheduled out there and taking place under a building permit that's already been issued for this project. The petitioner's requesting that this ordinance be approved on first and second reading on the same day. And if you're supportive of that, we've outlined the procedure for that on page six of your report, and that is a motion to approve on first reading, a motion to make a, a finding that a compelling public interest exists to allow approval on the same day, and a motion to approve on second reading. If you are supportive of the vacation and, and take those actions, then as a follow-up action, uh, we would recommend that a motion be made authorizing the mayor to sign the attached access agreement and, uh, on behalf of the city and the quick claim deed that would, uh, quick claim away the city's reversionary interest in the vacated Wayne Court right-of-way. The access agreement that's before you has been executed by both, uh, Salina Regional Health Center and Double J Enterprises, and so the mayor's signature would be the final, um, signature on that agreement. And if all this is approved, then those items would all be recorded together in the register of deeds office. I'd be happy to stand for any questions or go back and look at any other slides. John, if you could go to the before realignments slide, just to give you an idea of the, the change that has occurred out there. This, this is what the intersection looked like before and, uh, you did not have Belmont lining up with Wayne across the way. And so it was reconfigured to line up with Wayne there, bring this street down there and, and create it there. So that, that was all done as, as part of the major intersection realignment that occurred there, and so, um, it created some odd pieces that are still being pieced together.
Okay, great, any questions for staff? The only piece we'll retain is the little triangle piece, is that correct?
We have this little triangle here.
Right, just that? Okay, and the rest of it's just, okay.
We once owned this and transferred it to Sunflower. We once owned this as, and we transferred that, so that what you see there with angled parking there is actually the old roadbed for Wayne Avenue. So that, that pavement was retained and it's used for parking by Double J Enterprises.
Yep. Okay, great. No questions? Thank you. Do we have any public comment at this time?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Jeff Mays, Compro Realty, one fifty-seven South Seventh. I want to take a minute of your time to thank staff, uh, given the complexity of the ownership and what it used to be and how we got from there to what, to the request that's in front of you. It's, today, it looks pretty simple, but that's going through a lot of hard work by staff of cleaning up and figuring out exactly how it needed to get there. So I, on behalf of Salina Regional, would like to thank staff and make sure you're aware.
Okay, we appreciate that.
And I'll certainly stand for any questions if you had any, but...
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
If I may, I would add to Mr. Mays' comments that that staff work took time, which drug out the timeline, which creates the necessity for first and second reading, if at all possible. So it's not that we haven't been talking about this for a while and been mindful of the timeline, but the complexity of this kind of drug it out longer than we would have liked in, in light of the timeline for the project.
Well, we've seen progress happening over there, so we understand the urgency, so, okay, thank you. Uh, well, we'll bring it back, uh, up here for action then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve on first reading ordinance number one six one oh two, one oh eight two-one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second to approve on first reading ordinance number sixteen dash one zero eight two-one. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero with, uh, Commissioner Davis recusing himself, so, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we declare compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading of the ordinance on the same day.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second to, uh, declare a public interest, uh, a compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading on the same day. Uh, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
And Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number one six one oh eight two-one.
Wait a minute, oh one eight two one.
One oh eight two one, thank you.
There's a little typo there, good catch. Okay, a motion in the second to approve on second reading, ordinance number sixteen dash zero, one zero eight two one. Uh, is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, uh, we'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard?
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Thank you, Chief, for, for the assist there.
Did we also need a motion to authorize the mayor, uh, to sign a quick claim deed?
Oh, do we have a quick claim deed on that?
That would be a follow-up action to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and the quick claim deed.
Thank you.
Should we do that as well?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
I would make the motion then that we authorize the mayor to sign a quick claim deed and if there are any other parts of that. We need an access easement under, access easement agreement, thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second to authorize the mayor to sign the quick claim deed and the access agreement. Uh, any further discussion on that? And seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry, motion carries three zero as well, thank you.
Item eight point three, imposing a ninety-day moratorium on Salina Planning Commission, consideration of plats for subdivisions with frontage on an unpaved road... of plats for subdivisions with frontage on an unpaved road, and suspending all related time limitations under Chapter 36 of the Salina Code for consideration of such plats.
Okay, Mr. Gay.
Okay, Commissioners, real quick, I'll just kind of reminder that the Salina County Planning Commission is scheduled here for 7:00. Not that that should be our time target, but just so you know. Go ahead and get into this. One of the things that cities across the country struggle with is when there is a development, and the development prompts a need to upgrade, like a perimeter street. Or, in this case, it could be a little bit broader than just a street if we're dealing with sidewalk, or whatever it might be. There are legal considerations and policy considerations that relates to the development. One of the, in Salina, it's even more difficult for us because we have steady growth. Some people say we don't have growth, we do, but it's steady, but it's very slow. And so, a single area in a particular part of town doesn't develop that fast, and so, that actually makes it even more complicated to deal with. And so, the issue is, is what would a specification be? In this case, it's a perimeter street. What should the specification be? What triggers it, and how should the cost be allocated to, whether it be to the private and/or public sector, or both? In this particular case, we're dealing with Magnolia Hills 2, number 2 subdivision plat, and its location is over basically near Magnolia and also near Markley. And the street in question is a gravel road of Holmes Road. That's just on, creates an eastern boundary to it, considered a perimeter or frontage street. We do have tools in our subdivision code, in our city code, Salina code, and also policies adopted by the Planning Commission that have been determined to be legally enforceable. But, and I'll go through those real quick, but when we look at those, we're not sure that it covers all the aspects of this and would get you where you need it to be. And also, we feel like those policies are nice, but really, part of this is making sure that whatever the requirements are, they're clear to all parties. We're not sure that these are, that they're properly codified, in this case, should probably be in the Salina Code instead of separate policies. It's important, too, though that's more of a housekeeping item. I'll take you through them. The first one is Salina Code Section 36-74A, deals with subdivision frontage and access requirements. It was adopted in 1980. We're not sure if it does or doesn't address the City Commission or Planning Commission objectives, and that's not really an issue for today. That's an issue that would be dealt with later. The main issue with it is, is we believe there needs to be additional clarity with regard to the words "frontage" and "improved" because they're not defined, and I think you can go a lot of different ways with it. So, we think that the clarity needs to occur with regards to that and how that would be applied. The second item is Planning Commission Policy Number 88-1. That was last amended in 1991. It was adopted in 1980 initially. It addresses improvement of major streets abutting proposed developments. Again, hasn't really been looked at since '91, and not sure whether it meets all of your objectives or not, but the real issue is that it goes into addressing roadway design specification, a minimum specification for a perimeter roadway to a subdivision, and also goes into the cost allocation aspect, making reference to consent to special assessments. If you can just simply imagine, if you can look at your screen that you had pictures on before, and you can imagine all that is a benefit area, and you're going to develop in a small corner of it, let's say, if that small corner doesn't give you 50%, it creates issues about how you can have an active benefit district to recover costs for an improvement. So, if you presume that the road has to be paved to a certain standard, that's a safe presumption, and you're not sure if you will eventually have an active subdivision or a special assessment district, that's a concern. In this case, the consent to specials is a good tool because, you know, in this case, developer, I think, would willfully sign off to do consent to specials. But if the property there doesn't equal at least 50% of the entire benefit area, and the other property doesn't develop as one might expect at the rate that we need it to, and I'm going to say, subject to Greg's review, you'd probably need to activate that subdivision or special assessment district within about 15 years, I think. But if that didn't happen, you would go in with the intent of using consent to specials to eventually, for the city to cover the cost of the road initially under the current policy, for that to eventually come back to you and be recovered. But if that, if the rest of that area doesn't develop, that might never happen, and the city may end up covering the 100% of the cost of that perimeter road improvement. Now, if that's where the city would eventually want to go, that's not necessarily a bad issue. We're saying, we don't know, and that's where you could end up and not realize it in this particular case. So, that's a concern with Planning Commission Policy 88-1. We also believe it needs to be in the subdivision regs and be made clear. And it also brings into question other tools of how you recover costs if the consent to specials is not the best tool. There are other tools that can be applied in whatever means you would like as far as allocation, and also in a fair and clear way. Another policy is Planning Commission Policy Number 04-1, addresses access requirements. It was adopted not quite as far back as the others. It was in 2004. Again, don't know if that addresses the Planning and City Commission's preferences, but this policy doesn't reference a specification of perimeter road in which the subdivision is to access. It's talking about the prompting of a subdivision accessing a perimeter road, but it doesn't say what that minimum condition would be for the perimeter road. So, it's a little bit out of, it doesn't quite relate directly to the other provision we just talked about, and it should. So, that may be more of a cleanup item for that, but it just needs some clarity as well. And the final item is Salina Code Section 36-74.1, and that's the primary area of our code that addresses standard streets, the street standards and specifications for our streets. And in that particular case, we're not suggesting that the minimum specification for a perimeter road meet this, but this is silent on it altogether. So, you could go into this and say, hey, this applies to all streets, therefore, we need curb and gutter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Well, that's a decision yet to be made. Right now, that's not the standard for that perimeter street. The thought being is, is whatever the standard is, whether it's a typical 24-foot-wide asphalt, somewhat of a rural, could be a rural design, county rural design-type roadway, if that's, which has basically been what's been utilized in the past. If that's sufficient, that's fine, but it probably would be best to make sure that this area of the code is not completely silent on it, because it could easy, you could easily go in and say, well, no, forget the other areas. This is required to have a full curb and gutter, full storm drainage, and all of that. Again, you might decide you want that, there's advantages and disadvantages to all of that, or you might decide you don't later, and same thing with the Planning Commission. The fact is, is we need to be sure it's clear. Whatever the end result is, is clear in this code. You don't look over here and say, well, this means some, one thing, and then you look over in this code, and it says, this could mean another, and it's about eliminating that lack of clarity. And so, in the end, 5, 6, and 7, 5 is a little bit redundant. We talked about perimeter street standards. What is the standard? Is it sufficient, is it what we've kind of used in the past? And how do we need to modify all these to make sure they're all consistently pointed towards that? What are the funding mechanisms that we believe are allowable in Kansas for whatever allocation that you and Planning Commission should recommend as far as recovering any cost of that? And then, that goes all the way from the city paying 100% of the cost through the budget, in essence, to the private sector paying 100% of the cost through various means to get that cost and determining what the timeframe might be, and a lot of options in between. That's one we just really haven't, our codes, our rules have really not hit very well in the past, and now we are far enough out of a recession, we're seeing development demand, and we need to address it. And as I mentioned, the allocation approach is part of that. In March of, March 1st of this year, when the Planning Commission was reviewing the comprehensive plan, they, and I think they've grown pretty anxious about these issues, and asked staff to come up with some ways of addressing them that they can chew on, that they can talk about, they can discuss, debate, and then provide some direction back. And so, that's one thing that's prompted this as well. And we believe, we agree, we need to do this. We're really kind of sitting on the fence a little bit with this, and we don't have either a code and/or policies that are as clear and that relate to each other like they should, in our opinion. As we go further, we look at how does this fit within our strategic plan goals. You actually had some additional goals that we added this year that deal with development. One is to identify three to four priority zoning and subdivision code updates to complete in order to ensure the city's development codes conform to the comprehensive plan. This is pretty darned close to that. And then, what amenities should be required within the city's subdivision regulations that could be on the site, it could be outside of the site. Kind of gets back to the specification for the road. So, we believe that kind of fits both of those. The big thing is predictability and making sure that there's clarity and predictability with regard to what the codes say, and we don't point in multiple directions. That's really what we're after here, and we don't think that we're there right now. And so, we, quite honestly, staff's not real excited about any form of moratorium, but this one is specifically targeted, deals with those perimeter or frontage-type roads near what would be subdivisions to be considered, in which the road is a gravel road. That's what we're looking at right now, and the recommendation is a 90-day, which is about as short as we can possibly expect to have as far as a timeline to really get to the heart of this, because some of these are fairly difficult questions, and we would need to have conversations with our development community, get their thoughts, their input, run it through Planning Commission, and really work it through there, and that's the typical order. And then, hopefully, something comes out of there that they can strongly support, that then comes to you and that you can strongly support. Obviously, you have an option not to or to send it back, but we want to work within the timeframe we have, regardless of what option that might run. I think if we have, do we have an overhead on the, okay, got one overhead. We kind of, we're talking about, well, what have we done in the past, right? Well, most of the roads we've dealt with have already been some form of a rural design paved road, so we don't have a lot of good examples. That's Schilling Road from Ninth Street all the way down to Ohio, and you see three colors. You see the light blue, you see, it looks like kind of a old salmon color, something like that on there, and then a yellow. And that's the only road that we could come up with in modern-day time of a major road that was upgraded from a gravel road, and I believe that occurred in the early 90s with the development of the south end of Ninth Street with the Sam's Club and the Walmart and Target and all that development. And that light blue is, was an exaction, and what that meant is, is the developer actually had to just pay, and not only pay, but actually did the work, took care, and did the work to the specification that we agreed on. And then, that in-between section is, it was kind of a specialty subdivision, special assessment-type situation, in which we had property on the north that was in the city limits, property in the south that wasn't, so we had to work through a special provision that allows Salina, that allowed Salina County to participate with that. But in essence, it's a special assessment cost, a way to recover costs there. The larger area in the yellow is a cost recovery that's applied when you have a permit and you have a building that's built in that. So, on the north side, we've seen a lot of housing. We've recovered costs with each of the houses built in there. On the south side, we have a couple of large buildings there, but most of that still remains undeveloped, so that's probably extended the timeframe. But in that case, you have the only example we could find where we went from a gravel road to a fully improved road. There are three approaches, all of which take you to 100% private in some form or fashion, but that's not, we're not putting it up there because we recommend it, because we're not recommending any approach at this point in time. It's just the only example we could find right now. The approach the city has taken, and I think pretty consistently, is that in those upgrade situations, that the cost that's allocated privately, with maybe the exception, well, no, included that as well, be equal to the cost of a typical two-lane rural-type road in the city at large, has, which is us, have taken any other upgrade cost. That's sort of been the approach that I think has been fairly consistent with these various tools in the past. That was the approach taken there. So, on the 100% part, it relates more specifically to the cost that was attributed to a typical two-lane road. Well, we know that's not a typical two-lane, it's a wide three-lane road with curb and gutter and drainage and so forth, but the upgrade piece, the city at large took, just so you know. It's not relevant today because we're not here to solve the allocation problem, we're just here to explain what it is, and explain why we think that we need to call a, what hopefully will be a very, very brief timeout in order to solve this issue. The concern is that, is if you don't do that, and that forces the Planning Commission, and then the City Commission, to look at this particular subdivision, I can't say where you would end up on these, but it's a possibility that you could say, well, according to the codes, even if we wanted to, we couldn't approve a subdivision simply because of the possibilities of where these codes and policies take us on the cost allocation of the road. Staff's intent is not to get into a question with regards to whether someone should or shouldn't develop at a particular place. That is a big question you're certainly dealing with. But our issue is, is if that's acceptable from all other perspectives, how do we deal with the perimeter road? How does that, how's that cost allocated, and what's the specification for it? And we simply do not believe that our, because I stated, our codes and our policies get you there, and it creates multiple potential options and a lack of clarity, and quite a problematic situation could occur. So, that's why we said we need a timeout, we need to create that clarity, run it through and do it. And that's why we're here. You have a couple of options there. Obviously, approve the moratorium, decline it. This one, while we're running the pattern of a compelling public interest, we might as well throw it on this one, right? But it does get us quicker into the issue, and that's really important for this. And again, this is, this is only specific to a subdivision that's proposed, that's on a gravel road. It doesn't affect any of the other subdivisions that are being proposed at this point in time, as far as the moratorium at all. I'm not saying the end result couldn't, it could, but the moratorium is only applying to that because we felt it was important to tailor it to the one specific situation that we know needs to be addressed, and that's why it's tailored to that. It's not any broader than that. Again, the current preliminary plat is scheduled to be addressed by the Planning Commission on March 10th, which is why we felt like we need to jump out ahead of the date and move forward with this. With that, be happy to answer questions. Also, I'll probably tag team the answer to those. We've got, of course, you have legal question, Greg, Mike's involved, Gary and Dean, and I think, and maybe even John, and among all of us, we should be able to answer your question. Dan as well, so hopefully, we'll be able to answer your questions.
Okay, great. Is there any questions of staff at this time? I have a number of questions, but they're more, they're more tied to road standards and everything else, which I understand aren't part of this, so.
Yeah, right, and these policies and so forth are attached to this. You will find that the current standard under the Planning Commission Policy 88-1 is basically 24-foot-wide asphalt pavement surface with eight inches. So, that's been kind of the approach for a long time. That's an old, old approach. We do know that when, if you do, whether you do the moratorium or not, it's probably not tremendously relevant. We have to deal with this question anyway, it's just how it affects this subdivision, but we know we need to take a look at that.
Well, it's what it's going to be and what the fair allocation is, so.
Yes.
I think that those things are probably for down the road, so I'll save them for down the road.
Okay.
We do have a county planning commission meeting at 7:00, so. Anyway, is there, does anyone else have any questions about this?
Well, where does due process fit in in this? This area's been on the Holmes Road, at least portion of it's been on the transportation survey for many years. This is all part of the urban service area. You know, we're anxious to get a fieldhouse in the ground before the building season's over. It's 90 days, the least amount of time that staff can staff this out. I wouldn't want these things to be held up so that they lose a construction season.
I would say yes. Now, with that said, we will try to move as quickly as we can, and so, we want to have conversations with the development community, folks that are affected directly. We want to have those conversations. We want to try to then synthesize that information and provide blocks of information that the Planning Commission can deal with, because if we throw out 100 pieces of information, we won't be able to do anything with it, so we need to try to consolidate into potential options, and then hopefully get it out of there and over to you, and then it depends on how long it takes with you. The thought being is that we will try to run this as fast as possible, and then if we can get finished earlier, we can lift the moratorium. So, we'll certainly try to run it as quickly as reasonably possible. Once it gets, as you know, once it gets to the Planning Commission, eventually to you, you start, both entities start to control the time a little bit. Our job is to get it, to start off getting it to the Planning Commission as quickly as possible, so they can really chew on it. And we've even said, we expect a series of special meetings. We're not trying to run on a typical Planning Commission calendar. If we need special meetings, we'll do special meetings. It's that important, obviously, to do that, so we can accelerate it.
Well, and we have had, for some of the further items down the road, we have had already a study session that looked at some of that already, so it's not 100% fresh.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none? Do we have any public comment at this time?
Dan Bike was 2601, South Ohio, representing Magnolia Hills, Inc. Thank you for hearing me, and I'll keep this very short. We understand the complexity of the problem. We hope that all parties involved can come to an agreement within the 90 days so we can proceed. I just want to leave one thought in everybody's head. We don't even think we will need access to Holmes Road at the rate we're building. will need access to Holmes Road at the rate we're building for seven years. So I'd like to leave you with that thought and answer your questions if you have any.
Okay. Well, while you're up there with that comment, just whether it's Dean or, if they don't, if they submit a plan that doesn't require access to Holmes Road, would they, they wouldn't fall underneath the moratorium, would they, or?
That's part of the complexity.
Or is there a way that, or is there a way that that can?
Well, theoretically, I can, you can have a scenario in which you can, you can, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting this is occurring, that they're trying to respond to the development, the speed of the development demand in the community. But if you, if you just forget that for a second, you take a separate situation, you can envision, let's say, a large area and half of it's developed, you could, you could go in strips, and at some point, then there's maybe one strip left to allocate cost to. It creates an issue. So part of the issue for us is really determining the true benefit area, whether it's a consent to specials or whether there's another cost recovery tool. And again, part of the complexity is what does prompt the actual paving of the road, the timing of the paving. And then once you know that, you, it starts to clarify what those recovery, cost recovery options might be, or whether you're out ahead of it, whether you're behind it recovering. So there's, there's a lot of pieces to that.
Okay.
And on one last note, we realize that as a developer, you know, there's, there's some responsibility on our part. We're not saying there isn't. You know, we, we fully expect that. It's just how much, when, et cetera.
Okay. Well, we'll test through that on staff, and, and as I said, you, your plan is to work with all developers that are, that have this type of issue, that an upcoming road may partake, or is it just on the gravel?
Yeah, we're, this, this could affect others at other times, too. So certainly want to work with the, with Stan and with Kelly, and then there'll be others who have thoughts and input. We'll want to take that into consideration as well.
Okay.
I want to thank the commission for their time.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I certainly don't want to contradict the city manager. I believe that there's been conversations at the staff level, where the staff has been receptive to some alternate phased approaches Mr. Bikwus has proposed. And ultimately, the request that remains before us at the moment is a, you know, a fuller plat that takes us all the way to home. So there may be an opportunity to have some discussion about an alternate approach that could work while we kind of sort our way through this.
Well, just, just for clarification, when you talk about being incrementally or phasing down to a sliver and then having a very small benefit district, is there, is part of the approach that you're looking at then maybe trying to figure out at what point you figure what an entire benefit district might be? Because, yeah, you can sort of phase it, not master plan, and then get down to a sliver. But if you had, have a big vision about maybe what a section looks like that's master planned.
That's exactly right.
You would say that you, you know, and then you would actually have a bigger benefit district and spread that cost across.
Yeah. What happens is, is that with a, with a benefit district, you don't want to, if you're going to have it, you don't want to lose the opportunity to have it. And if you, even with a consent, if you can't ever get to the, the percentage in what would be the benefiting area you've determined, you're not going to actively, you're not going to activate that assessment district. You may never activate it within the timeframe you need to, to start collecting back. So that's an issue. But the other thing is, if you start, if you whittle away, from either side, doesn't matter, if you start whittling away at it, and then eventually, okay, now it has to be built. You could have such a small area, it's not even a reasonable allocation anymore. And then at that point, it'd fall pretty much on the public at large.
Well, what comes to mind is just that east, that east Salina master plan, that where if it's master planned wholly at this phase where you know where the ingress egress needs are going to be and so on, you're a little bit easier to identify a more broad benefit.
Yeah, and you have opportunity with other tools. The special assessment tool is actually a pretty good tool for a lot of things, and again, can be applied to a perimeter road. But there's timing aspects, there's, there's benefit area aspects, there's all kinds of aspects that deal with that. It may not always be the best tool, and eventually might look at it and say, well, if it's a tool we know for sure, we can actively have an assessment district no matter what, then it might be the best tool to use in some cases. If we look at it and say, well, there's a, there's a chance, but we don't know what the odds are, and there's a timeframe, and we don't know if we could, if all that's going to work. And is there a scenario in which you couldn't apply that? Then you would be looking at another tool. It would be some form of maybe a cost recovery tool or something like that, that when it's built, there's a cost recovery aspect, and it, and it goes to, whether it's built now or built tomorrow, it will go to everyone with, that would be in the benefiting area fairly. You can, you can probably set that up in a payment form if you want and make it just as fair as an assessment tool could be.
I'm just saying, when you have that and you have development that's already occurred, you can't go back and retroactively.
Yes, that's great. That's correct.
Exact whatever the benefit might be.
Yeah. The consent to specials kind of gives you sort of a way to do that. It's just, the question is at the end, are you going to be able to actively form that district? That's really the question there. But it gives you probably as good a way as any.
Okay.
So we have to look at those scenarios and make sure that we talk through those.
Okay, great. Is there any other public comment at this time? Mr. Andrew?
I was just going to add from the standpoint that in, in talking with the representatives of Magnolia Hills, Inc., that it's from staff's perspective and everyone's perspective, when a plat is being considered for approval, that is the time to establish all the ground rules and whatever fees or dedications or anything that is. That is, is a far better situation than to have somebody go through the plating process, than after they have a plat approved, to have someone try to change the rules of the game after they've got an approved plat. So we think it's in everybody's best interest to have a meeting of the minds and establish what the ground rules are at the time a plat's being considered for approval, rather than trying to change rules after you have an approved plat.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, bring it back up for action. Or discussion. But make it quick. We got county planning commission tonight.
To get our discussion going, I would move approval on first reading ordinance number 16-10827, imposing a 90-day moratorium on Salina Planning Commission consideration of plaits for subdivisions with frontage on an unpaved road and suspending all related time limitations under chapter 36 of the Salina Code for consideration of such plaits.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in the second to approve on first reading ordinance number 16-10827. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
Mr. Mayor, declare compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading of the ordinance on the same day. It's ordinance 16-10827.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to declare compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading of ordinance 16-10827 on the same day. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption on second reading ordinance number 16-10827 is previously read.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to adopt on second reading ordinance number 16-10827. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. Ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard?
Aye, and that motion carries four, zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move into other business real quick. Anybody have anything for other business prior to a motion for executive session? I have just two quick things. One, we heard on, on our study session, our new website will go live tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. So for those of you at home that are watching this, go online tomorrow sometime and check out our new website. The second thing is, is as many of you know, Iron Avenue is open. And two groups of people I'd like to thank, one is city staff and the contractors who, who got that completed. It looks great. I think it, and I think compliments to the commission, too, for really working through getting that as an impact street and getting the improvements done on that. But, but second and probably most importantly is, are the businesses that are located in the area that was most highly impacted, and the traveling public that had to make numerous detours. But anyways, thanks to all those groups of folks for enduring, and it looks like sometime in May, the eastern portion will be done. So that's a great thing. And then tomorrow evening, there's a plug-in Salina. It's a event that's taking place at the Bicentennial Center, and there's going to be a lot of groups, a lot of nonprofits and other groups that offer opportunities for people to volunteer or get involved in the community. And it's a project by, that's being put on by a half a dozen students or participants in the Chamber of Commerce Program Leadership Salina. So if you're, if you're able tomorrow evening, go online, it might be on the new website, hopefully, a little information on that. But it'd definitely be on the Chamber of Commerce website and get information on that and, and hope you'd be able to make it, so.
Mayor, a quick, a couple of quick comments on Iron Street. One is just so people know that it's open, but it's not finished in the sense that they still need to do the lane markings. And so if some folks are looking for the bicycle paths on the roadway, they'll be marked in as well here fairly soon. And the second thing is, is that the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce has graciously agreed to work with us on a ribbon cutting so we can actually formally sort of dedicate that, and also bring some attention to the businesses that have, I think, suffered quite a lot there, and the residents, too, but really the businesses have suffered monetarily, I think, as you do in a, in a major project like that. And it'll give us an opportunity to get their name out and encourage people to come, you know, use the, use the road and go back to their old patterns.
Right. And I'll just, I'll just add one quick thing. I had my notes, and I did put the, drive down there because the lighting looks great, so drive down at night if you can.
Is it light?
Yeah.
It's pretty bright.
Yeah.
Good. Do that to my street.
It's got a great new look. All the, all the utility lines are buried now in that section. And then also, you know, you did mention the business. You've got Allure Salon, you've got the Burger King, the Community Theater, Save-A-Lot. A lot of the business down there in the last few years have done a lot of renovations, Assurance Partners, the Flower Nook and all those. A lot of businesses have really improved in having that entryway into Salina looking good as well, I think, is, is a nice development and, and I think really helps to set the stage for a lot of work that's going to be going on downtown. So thanks to everybody involved in that. Now, the fun part.
Your turn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 50 minutes. We'll let cover this time.
Was that 15 or 50?
50, 50, 5-0.
That's what I thought you said.
For the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and to discuss matters pertaining to the acquisition of real estate for the reason that public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the city's position in relation to acquisition of the real estate, and reconvene at, what would that be, 6:30, 7:30 PM?
Second.
Thought nobody wanted to do it. Have a motion second to recess into executive session for 50 minutes for personnel and real estate purposes, and return at 7:30 PM. No, no business after this, right?
That's correct, no business.
So we will not actually be returning here because there will be a county planning commission meeting, but we will adjourn the, adjourn the executive session at 7:30. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four, zero. We're in executive session.
Thanks.